Our Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, August 7, 2012 at 9:01 a.m. We will begin this morning with the flag salute led by Supervisor Holmes.
Our flag salute is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor. We will now have the statement of meeting procedures read by our Clerk of the Board, Anne Holman.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, August 7, 2012. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The Board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the Board. Keep in mind that the Chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cellphones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you Anne. Now is the time for public comment. This is the time persons may address the Board on any item not on today's agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes since the time allocated for public comment is 15 minutes. If all comments cannot be heard within the 15-minute time limit, the public comment period will be taken up again at the end of our regular session. The Board is not permitted to take any action on items addressed under public comment. If you have public comment, please come forward and identify yourself.
Good morning. I'm your Placer County Museums Administrator, and it's my pleasure to be here today to encourage you to participate in and attend the Heritage Trail. This is the first year, the fifth year for this event, and the Board has supported this wholeheartedly every single year. Thank you very much for that. Although you fund and support six museums in the county, which I in turn manage, there are 18 museums involved in this event, and they extend from Lincoln and Roseville all the way up to Tahoe City. So almost every Supervisor here has at least one museum in their district. And all of the museums are local history museums, and our concept is that you move from museum to museum and get an idea of the history of the area and how it changed from the valley to the foothills to the mountains. So I hope we see some of you on the trail. I'd be delighted to be your tour guide if any of you would want to do that. Please contact me. I'll be out and about both days just going around and making sure that everyone has the materials that they need. So I have a bag here of trail guides, and this is also available at every museum, and there are maps and directions and lists of activities for each museum, and also some bookmarks here for the museums. Every museum is open from 10 until 4 on the two days, and it's free. So if you can't come, get a neighbor to come, or your family, or children, or whatever. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward at this time? Yes, please.
Hello Board. My name is James Danicki. I'm a resident in Placer County. I live 9016 Pino Canyon Way in Roseville. I'm a retired real estate broker. I was a member of the Board up there in Tahoe Sierra. My father was the president and founder of American River Bank back in the day when banks had nothing to do with real estate. And the reason that I'm here today is the home that I'm living in, not owned by me, but the home that I'm living in, is scheduled to be auctioned in a month. It's being auctioned based on forgeries. They're part of the county recorder. I have evidence right here of certified copies of forgeries. The MERS system has not been authorized to do business in California since 2003, and I have documentation from the state of California to prove so. So this MERS organization is pushing phony documents into the county recorder. Our sacred documents are destroyed. We don't know who owns what in Placer County right now. So my recommendation, I know you can't answer me, but is to put a moratorium on all sales or all these thefts that they call sales, because there's no proof. And we've sent RESPA documents requesting proof of, requesting qualified written requests. We've been ignored all the time getting railroaded. So this is just my comment to the Board that we got serious problems over in the county recorder. I can't even record my own documents, but the bank can. The bank is considered, anything you want to record is no problem. If I try to record documents at the county recorder, I get sheriffs showing up at my door the next day saying, that refuse to identify themselves, saying, "Why are you trying to record documents that aren't part of the statutes?" So I'm real concerned. I love Placer County, and we need to fix this mess. Okay? Thank you very much for your time.
Sir, one quick question. I'm sorry. Where in Roseville are you?
I'm in Pino Canyon Way, over near Crocker Ranch.
Crocker Ranch.
Crocker Ranch, Wood Creek area.
I'm with Eric.
And I'd be happy to spend any time with anybody. I do have the documents.
Right.
Be happy to work with law enforcement.
If you could contact Terry Ivaldi.
Terry?
Yeah.
Terry Ivaldi?
Ivaldi.
Ivaldi, huh?
Yeah, and maybe we can talk after.
That'd be fantastic, yeah.
We can talk about that.
Okay. Where would I find Terry Ivaldi?
She works for the Board. Holly Heinzen in the back right there will direct you to her. Holly, raise your hands if you happen to know who we're talking to.
Thank you very much. Thank you for taking my time. Appreciate it.
Thanks Kirk.
Did you have something?
No.
Oh, here she comes, right there. Walking right in.
Through county council. We can handle that one.
Government in action.
Yes, in action, not inaction. Any other public comment at this time?
Okay.
All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and move to Supervisor's Committee reports. I will start down on the far end here. Supervisor Euler.
Just want to take the opportunity to update the Board. As the Board knows, we're moving forward with the SMD III closure, and it requires us, well, it doesn't require, but the option we're pursuing is looking into SMD II. Therefore, we're going to be doing some sewer line work and all the rest. Well, our Facility Services Department had put together some different alternatives. They presented them at the MAC a couple months ago, and one of the alternatives caused quite a bit of concern in the district, in the Hidden Valley area in particular, an area that near and dear to my heart, since I grew up there and my folks still live there. And rest assured, almost everybody there has my home number, and they used it. And anyway, the Facility Services, Mr. Gurfey's job, Bill Zimmerman, the team just did a great job meeting with the community, exploring other alternatives that weren't going to impact Hidden Valley as dramatically, and came back to the MAC at the last MAC meeting, made a presentation, and I believe received a standing ovation from the folks that were there originally to show up and protest what Facility Services was going to try to do. They actually got a standing O from those folks. So I just wanted to thank Jim and his team for going above and beyond and meeting with my constituents and addressing the problem head-on.
Thank you. Supervisor Duran? Anything? Supervisor Holmes? Wygant? Okay. This is not technically a Supervisor's Committee report, but I did just want to take this opportunity to, just in light of the recent robbers' fire, to do a couple of very quick thank-yous to some organizations in the affected communities, Forest Hill, Iowa Hill, and Colfax, and also some folks here at the county. What I've done is I've put together, it's really token, but it's a sincere token of my appreciation. It's a certificate of recognition to various groups and individuals, and I really wanted to just very quickly take the opportunity to call out the different groups that worked on the robbers' fire, because it was more than just the county of Placer, and I think it's important for people to realize, and this is just a partial listing, this does not cover all the various fire departments that sent crews and equipment from throughout the state, but locally, these are the groups that I just very quickly want to say thank you to. CAL FIRE, of course, who is the main responder, CAL EMA, the Red Cross, CHP, Placer County Sheriff's Office, the Air Pollution Control District, Recology, Auburn-Placer, Health and Human Services, particularly Animal Services, who did just an amazing job rescuing animals and moving them from the fire-threatening areas to largely the fairgrounds here, the Public Information Office, our Office of Emergency Services, Department of Public Works, our road crews, were just amazing in getting out there and helping with closures and rerouting folks where necessary. Our GIS department did some incredible mapping, which was very helpful and very useful to all the entities. Facility Services, Perks and Veterans Hall staffs, our Veterans Hall in both Colfax and Forest Hill were utilized for this emergency. CEO's office, and then a number of staff from both the CEO's office and the Board of Supervisors who went and volunteered at the Forest Hill Shelter, at the Colfax Information Center, and at our own Public Information Center, at our Office of Emergency Services. In Colfax, particular thanks to both the City Council, who allowed us to use City Hall when the Veterans Hall proved a little bit unworkable for what we were trying to do, and also to the staff and general manager at Colfax, because that was above and beyond the call of duty to let us use their facilities. In Forest Hill, the Forest Hill Fire Protection District, the Forest Hill Fire Safe Council, the Chamber of Commerce was an incredible partner for us. The Veterans Hall Board, again, in Forest Hill didn't just let us use their facility, but provided ice, food, support for the local community. And then Forest Hill High School, when we actually had to move from the Veterans Hall to a different location, because we had some weddings booked for the Veterans Hall for that weekend. So it went from being an emergency shelter to being a wedding reception hall in about a day, and so that was pretty impressive. For those of you who don't know, the fire was restricted to 2,650 acres. Given the terrain, given the weather that we were facing at the time, that was just an incredible, incredible feat. And again, my sincere thanks to all these folks I've named. I know I've forgotten someone, and I apologize for having done that, but all of those folks are going to be getting a certificate from me just to say thank you on behalf of me personally, but the county as well. So that's it for me.
Madam Chair, I would just like to thank my aide Ruth Owles, who was in Forest Hill and Colfax as well. She spent quite a bit of time working with the PIO's office, so wanted to give a thank you to Ruth, my trustee aide. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I wasn't calling anyone out by name, because I knew I'd really forget a bunch of people if I tried that. So I only want to step on a few toes, not 100 of them. Anything else on committee reports before I move on? All right. Seeing none. We will now move to the consent agenda. This will be a roll call item. All items on the consent agenda, which are items eight through 20, have been recommended for approval by the County Executive Department. All items will be approved by a single roll call vote. Anyone, a member of this Board or a member of the audience, may ask to address consent items prior to the Board taking action, and that item may be moved for discussion. So at this time, is there anyone on the Board or in the public who would like an item? Please come forward if there's something you'd like removed from consent for discussion.
Marilyn Jasper Public Interest Coalition, item number 19, we would like to have pulled for discussion.
Item number 19 is Public Works, contract number 1126, traffic signal and lighting installation, Auburn-Folsom Road and King Road.
Madam Chair, I'd also like to have item 13C pulled for just a comment.
Okay. And item number 13C is?
13A, sorry.
13A or C?
13.
13A?
Item 13A.
Okay. There is no C, so that would have to be A. Okay. Item 13A is the...
It would be all 13C if you want.
Thanks Kirk. That would be the merit increases, County Executive item. Okay. So exclusive of items 19 and 13A, do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
All the roll call.
Duran?
Yes.
Wygant? Holmes? Euler? Montgomery?
Yes. We will start with 13A. Supervisor Duran?
Yes, I only have one comment, and I thought this was a really great report that was put together by our County Executive Offices. The only suggestion that I have, and maybe some of the Supervisors may have some input in this, is that in looking at where we're coming from, Step 3, Grade 466 to Step 4, I really, that doesn't really put it into context as to where we're coming from and where we're going. I would appreciate just a little bit more information. For example, what is Step 3? We know what Step 4 is, and then also just where we end up for an overall salary. That's just, that's my comment.
Madam Chair, move forward there.
Item 13 has been moved and seconded for approval. Anne?
Duran?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery? Yes. We will now move to item 19. And Marilyn, would you like to come forward and...
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
If I could beg your indulgence, we have the entire Placer County Library staff here, and I'd like to finish the commendation for Carrie Sampson before the library opens. So if it's, if it's not too much trouble, since it's a 9:15 timed item, I'd like to proceed with that, if that's...
Certainly. Marilyn, would you mind waiting? Okay. Thank you. All right. We will defer action on item 19, and we will move to item 1. Supervisor Holmes?
Thank you. This is a matter of resolution commending Carrie Sampson for 34 years of public service to the Auburn-Placer County Library, and it's my distinct honor to present this to her, and Madam Chair, I thank you for allowing me to do this. So I'm going to read this to you, and I hope I got everything right, because if I didn't, I know you'll let me know.
She'll fact-check you.
Whereas Carrie Sampson was born in the Highland Hospital, as I was, in Auburn, and raised on the Sampson Spring Creek Ranch on Baxter Grade in the Mount Vernon District of North Auburn, and educated in Auburn schools. How am I doing so far? Okay. Whereas Carrie earned an Associate of Arts degree in agriculture from Sierra College in 1975, and a Bachelor of Arts degree in liberal arts from California State University, Sacramento, in 1977. And whereas Carrie's willingness to go the extra mile for patrons and colleagues alike, as well as her surprisingly irreverent sense of humor, created a more interesting and satisfying work environment. And whereas Carrie, during her 34 years with the Auburn-Placer County Library, adorned library displays with her charming collections of reindeer and goats, with her holiday decorations, an adorable pumpkin costume at Halloween that delighted the public, young and old alike. Whereas Carrie's devotion to the historical research of the communities, individuals, places, and artifacts of Placer County has and will continue to benefit all who seek a lens into Placer County's past. And whereas Carrie's many colleagues and library patrons, neighbors, and friends alike have benefited greatly from her vast storehouse of local history knowledge, her dedication to providing excellent reference service, her patience and empathy, and her quietly subversive and delightful sense of humor. And whereas Carrie has served the public and library patrons in the Auburn-Placer County Library for 34 years with continued excellent customer service and in-depth research to fulfill patrons' needs while sharing her extensive knowledge of and interest in local history. Now therefore be it resolved that the Placer County Board of Supervisors of the county of Placer, on behalf of the citizens of Placer County, acknowledge with great appreciation Carrie Sampson's exceptional service and wish her well in her retirement and future pursuits. Congratulations. And before I bring this down, I just want to make a personal comment. I've known the family for all my life, but Carrie's interest in local history comes in real handy sometimes, and I'll never forget the letter to the editor, somebody unknowingly that didn't understand the history of Placer County, condemning DeWitt Center for being named after John L. DeWitt, the commanding general of the Western Defense Command, who oversaw the internment of Americans of Japanese descent. And Carrie was very quick to point out in another letter that, actually, the hospital was named after John DeWitt's father, Calvin DeWitt, who was an Army surgeon and a brigadier general in the United States Army. So I'll never forget that, and whenever anybody brings that up, I'll... So anyhow, I want to bring this down to you and present this to you personally. Thank you. And now you can give her a standing ovation.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Holmes. Thank you very much Carrie. All right. After everyone's filed out, we will move on to item 19 from the consent agenda.
Good morning. My name is Marilyn Jasper. I'm speaking on behalf of Public Interest Coalition. We're asking that you postpone any approvals of the traffic signal of this item. Research indicates that traffic signals on rural roads are not only unnecessary except in extremely rare situations, but also that they can cause or create more dangerous situations, primarily rear-end collisions. A traffic signal at King and Auburn-Folsom Roads may simply be trading one type of safety issue for another. We couldn't find the county's traffic analysis warrant, but if this intersection is unsafe, then safety is what must be dealt with, not traffic volume. Traffic volumes in and of themselves on rural roads do not trigger the need for a signal. In this case, we feel there are other factors that should be addressed before installing a signal. Traffic signal reduces mobility by increasing delays on the road that carries the most traffic, which is Auburn-Folsom. Heavier vehicles traveling at legal speeds are more difficult to stop and then need several minutes to accelerate back up to the legal speed limit, especially on Auburn-Folsom's uphill grade. People using Auburn-Folsom who haul horses in either direction, Folsom or Auburn, who are towing those trailers, will not want to stop quickly, especially on the downhill run. Instead of a one-size-fits-all approach to this intersection, we're asking that other safety alternatives be looked into. And some of these alternatives might include acceleration lanes, especially coming out, well, coming out on either side of King Road, straightening the curve on Auburn-Folsom just north of King Road for a longer sightline, creating a roundabout. It has potential, especially if combined with lowering the speed limits through that intersection. And this last option that I've just mentioned, coupled with the streetlights that are a part of the project, would be beneficial, might resolve the issue. The circulation portion of the Horseshoe Bar Community Plan merely states that a capital improvement program has been proposed to support future development, but that development has not materialized as projected. The plan further states, quote, "Other capital improvements may be necessary to correct existing roadway and geometric deficiencies, et cetera." But it's not a mandate to do it. We support spending traffic mitigation fees for safety, but a traffic signal will create more safety issues than it resolves, and it may force traffic onto inadequate ulterior routes. We ask that you postpone the granting of this traffic signal until the project can be explored more fully, and public input may be accepted. There were two public hearings that I know of, but they were informational only. They were not for suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to comment on this? If you could have the Department of Public Works up here, please.
Good morning. Richard Moorhead with Public Works. We're here today to request an action to adopt a resolution authorizing the Chair of the Board to award and execute the construction contract number 1126 for the traffic signal and lighting installation at Auburn-Folsom and King Road. The lowest responsive and responsible bidder, which was Pacific Excavation, in the amount of $234,211, and authorize the Director of Public Works to execute a contract, or execute contract change orders up to an amount of 10% above the contract amount. I think you all well know that this signal itself is included, or this roadway and all the roadway networks in this area are included in the Horseshoe Bar-Pinrin Community Plan. That community plan was updated in 2005 and was based on the southeast Placer transportation study. At that time, this particular project, the signalization of Auburn-Folsom-King, was included in that plan. And when we update community plans, there is a lot of public outreach, and that is the time the decisions are made for the roadway networks that's going to be there, the type of devices that are going to be installed, those types of things. This came out a few years back. We had a request from some residents to look at this intersection, to see if it was meeting warrants yet for signalization. We went out and did that. It did meet warrants. I have sent Marilyn Jasper the warrant analysis. She has that. I've emailed that to her. I did go to the Horseshoe Bar MAC. It was low attendance, maybe not well noticed. There were just a few people there, and they said at that time that they wanted to have a bigger meeting, or a more project-specific meeting. We identified a mile radius around that intersection with input from the people that were there, about how big of an area we really wanted to look at. At that point, we sent out close to 700 mailers, in addition to anybody that was on the mailing list for the MAC. There were 60 to 70 people. Not everybody signed in. There were certainly some people opposed to it for various reasons. You know, it's a rural-character roadway, and it ruins that rural character. A majority of people in the audience were supportive of the signal and requested that we move forward with it. We came in front of your Board in May to authorize to bid for this project. A couple of the things we did hear, that one was a roundabout potentially at that location. Certainly, a roundabout is doable in most locations, and I think the Board knows we're supportive of roundabouts. We have roundabouts in North Star. We have them here in DeWitt. We have them. We're doing the ones in Kings Beach, probably the most controversial project we've done in a long time. So it's not that we're opposed to roundabouts, and it's not that they couldn't be done here. It's certainly more difficult at this location. You have a high-speed horizontal curve coming into a roundabout in a corridor that is signalized. And when you're, so it's not the best solution. There's also right-of-way impacts. The other part, like I said, was just ruining the rural character, but that, I believe, was pretty well-vetted as part of the community plan process as opposed to this particular process. So that decision was made, I believe, back in 2005. Straightening the road, I think you know, Marilyn mentioned, that's some of the things she had mentioned here, would be very difficult in that location, lots of right-of-way takes. That's a pretty long horizontal curve. It would be, I don't know for sure, but I suspect would have significant impacts there on some residents. Acceleration lanes in and of themselves can work. They're very difficult to do when you have left-turn pockets, and on this particular roadway, it's a four-legged intersection. So you can imagine having your left-turn pocket with an acceleration lane next to it, that's extremely difficult, again, add a bunch of width to the roadway. We're not adding any pavement in this project. It's signalization. There are no right-of-way takes. Again, it's been a planned project since certainly 2005, when the community plan was updated. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Supervisor Duran?
Yes, Richard. Thank you very much for your comments. You had mentioned that it's not the best solution here, but with regards to feasibility, where does it rank?
That's always a difficult one. I believe that a signal is more appropriate traffic control device at this location than a roundabout. Maybe in, you know, who knows, what distance out... out we are from being able to do roundabouts everywhere where people are really used to driving them. But when you're on a commute corridor, high-speed, again, this is in a horizontal curve. It's just the visibility of it, the speed of it. It would be a difficult place to do one and make it as safe as what I believe a signal would.
Okay. And I also notice in the report here that the project consists of the installation of a traffic signal, lighting in advance, flashing beacons that will provide a safer environment by assigning right-of-way to traffic in an orderly and predictable manner. Can you kind of expand on that just a little bit?
Yeah. One of the things that occurs out there, in particular on that east leg of the intersection, is people trying to come out from that. It's limited sight distance. And we heard it from the west as well, people trying to get out there. In particular, the property owners that are on those corners of the intersections voiced their favor for the signal, and that it's difficult to get out. So if you're sitting there and you're waiting to make any one of those turning movements out, you're, from what we heard in the public comment, is you've just got to gun it and go. In this case, you have the flashing beacons in advance, warning the signal's going to be there. The signal heads are visible, plenty in advance to see that. It allows the people to come to a stop, and those turning movements to be made, in particular from the side street.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Supervisor Holmes?
Thank you, Richard. I attended the Horseshoe Bar Municipal Advisory Council meeting where this issue was brought forward, and if I remember right, there wasn't a quorum, but there were several people that spoke against it and others that spoke for it. And at that time, I had asked Richard to put a community meeting together at the Loomis Veterans Hall. And there was quite a few people there. There were some that were for it, and some were against it. One of the important things that I remember for that meeting, though, is a gentleman got up and said, "This has been brought forward to Placer County as a potential problem area. And if we don't move forward and do nothing, and then there is an accident, then we could be liable for not following through with putting something in as far as a stoplight." So I'm going to support moving forward with this. It just comes down to a public safety issue for me. There's more and more people using Auburn-Folsom Road, people trying to get out on, and it's, you know, I use the one at Horseshoe Bar quite often, and it's, you know, sometimes you're delayed a little bit, but it's not enough to be a significant delay. So I really don't see a problem with it, and I would support moving forward with it, and I'll make that in the motion.
All right. Under discussion, I have a few comments or questions. Rich, you indicated that this met the signal warrant analysis. Can you explain that a little bit? Because I know you and I have talked about it in the past as it relates to 49 in Lone Star specifically, which did not meet the signal warrant, but can you explain what those criteria are and which of those were met?
There are nine signal warrants. There's some of them that they're not going to meet. There's a pedestrian warrant. I can't remember all of them off the top of my head. I remember which ones it met, so we'll go through those. But there's a pedestrian warrant, a school warrant, and one for railroad. There's some other ones out there. This one met the volume warrants. It met the peak hour warrant, which typically is the one you will meet first, and once you meet that one, then you'll start looking at all of the other ones. It met a four-hour and eight-hour warrant as well. So it's really the volume of the side street traffic has gotten high enough, and the through traffic on Auburn-Folsom has gotten high enough to where you're having to wait essentially too long to get out from those side streets. And as that volume increases, too, although there's a safety warrant, but that safety warrant is a signal would be installed if there are five accidents a year that are correctable by a signal. So it's mostly broadsides. So you can imagine if you're having five broadsides a year, to meet a safety warrant. I hope we never get to that point here and wait that long to do something about a particular intersection. So we've never met a safety warrant here. But, so those are different warrants, but it meets it on the volume warrant is what it's currently meeting on. And as those volumes increase, the likelihood of collisions increases.
And what is the incidence of collisions there just generally? I mean, I know it probably varies from year to year, but...
There have maybe one a year, but they're not, a lot of these aren't correctable by a signal. The latest one that happened, I believe, someone was, if I remember right, they were northbound, went past the intersection, decided to do a U-turn, and they were hit. Certainly not going to be correctable by a signal unless, for some reason, that signal happened to be red. But that one wouldn't even be counted in that warrant analysis because that's something, you can't guarantee, obviously, that would be a red indication at that time the person decided to do that U-turn.
So it's really the overall traffic, the four and the eight-hour warrants that are met?
The four, the eight, and the peak hour. So the volume warrants are met, yes.
Okay. How many signals are on our stretch of road, say, between the county line and Auburn?
Just Horseshoe Bar.
And I ask just because of the question of, you know, regarding the rural nature of...
Well, Horseshoe Bar is the closest. That's about a mile away.
Mm-hmm.
Douglas, Eureka...
Yeah, you drive that every day, Kirk, don't you?
Fuller, that's right. I think there's five.
Eureka.
Beale's Point.
Point.
Yeah, and then there's the emergency, the emergency one in Calais, Alman.
Right. Okay.
Good Indian Hill.
Five or six?
Five or six, that it already exists. Okay.
Indian Hill has...
Oh, yeah.
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 Thank you. Those were all my questions.
And I'm sure I'd like to point out that all the neighbors that live around that intersection support the traffic signal. Many of them made comments about people driving off the road into their properties that weren't necessarily reported to the sheriff's department. So the people that live surrounding the property by the signal, the proposed signal light reported wholeheartedly.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Supervisor Yulo, your light is on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll now move to our 9:30 timed item, Community Development Resource Agency, Terracina Oaks Apartments.
Good morning. I'm Kathy Donovan from the Housing Specialist from Planning Services Division. Planning Services is requesting that the board conduct the Tax and Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing to receive input from the public regarding the use of tax-exempt bonds for the Terracina Oaks project, and to also approve the financing of the project by the California Municipal Finance Authority. The purpose of the bonds is to restructure the ownership of the project and to do some rehabilitation to extend the project's useful life. The project is about 12 years old, had a 55-year affordability restriction. With the issuance of bonds, the 55 years would reset. The rehab work is, also includes amenities for the residents, and the rent structure will not change. Ben Barker is here from CMFA, and Darren Bobrowski from USA Properties, if you have any specific questions.
I see none. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is a public hearing. Yes, my apologies. At this time, I'd like to open this up to the public if there's any questions or comments on this item. Now is the time to come forward and bring those to the attention of the board. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll now move to Department item number four, Health and Human Services, Adult System of Care, US Department of Housing and Urban Development. Maureen Bowman presenting.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As you said, Maureen Bowman with the Adult System of Care. This morning, I do have three items for you, but I think we should take them one at a time because they're distinct. The first, as you mentioned, is an item that really maximizes federal funding to provide housing assistance to persons who are homeless and have a severe mental illness. There are two grant awards in this request. We are asking for your approval for the renewal grant agreement with US Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and to receive funds for the permanent supportive housing in the amount of $299,927. It does require approximately a 10% County General Fund match of $28,936. This is for a 12-month term, and it begins December 1st, 2012. The second is an approval for a renewal grant agreement with HUD to receive funds for Shelter Plus Care 2011 in the amount of $290,004 in 2012. This does not require any county match. There are some in-kind services which we will put in place with existing resources that are already budgeted for 2013. So HUD provides permanent supportive housing grants to help reduce homelessness for those with mental illness in Placer County by providing rental assistance for housing and support services, and to really assist people to become more self-sufficient. Participants in the program pay 30% of their income towards the rent. In the last grant year, 28 single adults and four families were served with the average length of stay being four years. This program allows for a successful transition from homelessness to permanent housing. The HUD Shelter Plus Care Grant also helps to reduce homelessness by providing rental subsidies, and participants of the program must also pay the 30% of their income towards rent, and they must be involved in supportive services, employment, case management, treatment, the services being the required match for this particular program. During the last grant year, 63 adults and 12 children were served in this grant, and of those who left the program, more than half left for permanent supportive housing, for permanent housing, and the medium length of stay in this program is two years. This grant, really, the permanent housing and supportive services continue to help these clients in leading productive and healthy lives that help to avoid community impacts such as the overuse of emergency rooms, overuse of psych hospitals, and impacts on the criminal justice system. So I'd be happy to answer any questions and recommend approval of the two grants.
I see no questions from the board. What's the desire of the board on this? Any questions, concerns from the audience?
Move approval.
Second item, 4A, 1 and 2.
All right. We have a motion in a second to approve item 4A, 1 and 2. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
The second item is to approve a two-year agreement with Seventh Avenue Center in an amount not to exceed $300,000. There is $180,000 County General Fund match required for this. It is to provide mandated intensive mental health services for Placer County residents with the highest needs from July 1st, 2012 through 2014, and to authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign the agreement and subsequent amendments up to 10%. Placer County Adult System of Care provides unique mental health services that are mandated for approximately 5,000 residents each year, and of this amount, about 25 people each year require some very intensive levels of service that are similar to this contract's state hospital, other kind of intense services. This contract will be used to provide essential care for these adults with very severe mental disorders who are unable to care for their own basic needs and are at risk to themselves and others, and do require 24-hour supervision. And we have some individuals who have had some significant challenges, and we've been having trouble with using our existing provider continuum to get them actually placed. So Seventh Avenue Center in Santa Cruz will be a new provider to Placer County. It has an excellent reputation when we've checked with the other counties that have been using this particular program. They're providing therapeutic setting in a secure setting, and they'll be needing, meeting needs of clients who we are having trouble getting their needs met in other programs. We believe the service delivery model continues to provide the most cost-effective and results-based option for Placer County with community integration strategies that have really kept this number of people at this low level over the last number of years. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about this contract. It is, the match is budgeted in our 2013 budget. We could use different providers. We're using this one because we can't use another one, so the overall level of funding for that provider mix is going to stay the same.
I see no questions from my fellow board members, but are there no local providers who could, I mean, it concerns me that we're taking Placer County residents and sending them to Santa Cruz, not because Santa Cruz isn't a great place, but just it makes it difficult for family members to be part of their...
We have, these are big institutions. They're called Institutes for Mental Disease. They're locked psychiatric hospitals, and we, they're not really hospitals. They're step downs from hospitals. They're not acute. They're longer-term. There's two locally through the Crestwood system, and we definitely have contracts with anything that is in the Sacramento area. But these people have not been accepted into those programs, and so we have to continue to go out, and so we really go all over the state of California. We don't go outside of the state of California so far, but we are looking, we literally need to have alternatives where we can actually get people accepted.
So there really are no alternate locations?
We've tried, we absolutely try the closest ones first.
Okay. It's just always my concern that family members...
Absolutely.
Have access to, you know...
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Any public comments on this? Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, actually, I just wanted to clarify. This is a two-year contract, and I noticed down here at the bottom of the board report, it looks like $150,000 is going to be spent on, in 2012-13, and then another $30,000 is going to be spent in 13-14. Is that correct?
In terms of the county match?
Right.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
All right. What's the pleasure of the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
So the last item, 4C, also requires two actions from this board. It is to approve the award of requests for proposals, the RFP, for transitional employment programs, and to approve a contract with the Advocates for Mentally ill Housing in the amount of $268,000 from August 8, 2012 through June 30, 2014. This is 100% funded with state dollars and requires no County General Fund match. One of the requirements of State's Mental Health Services Act is for counties to transform their mental health systems in part by empowering and employing persons with lived experience. Placer is accomplishing this through the development of career ladders for persons with lived experience who enter the malhealth workforce, building an infrastructure that will improve service delivery and empower those who need such services. One such ladder is this transitional employment program that we're establishing, and the selected contractor is going to partner with the Adult System of Care to hire and supervise persons with lived experience to work in public and private sector settings, providing malhealth support services. A request for proposal was recently conducted to select a contractor to oversee the transitional employment program. The Procurement Services Division sent notices, conducted a pre-proposal conference, and convened a five-member evaluation panel. The evaluation panel consisted of Adult System of Care staff, Children's System of Care, State Department of Rehabilitation, Placer Independent Resource Services, and a person with lived experience from the local community. Although we did exclusive advertising and many firms, you know, reviewed the proposal, we did only get one proposal. That was with the Advocates for Mentally ill Housing, but the review panel did make a determination that that proposal was responsive to the needs of the county and is recommending that the contract be awarded as a result of the review. The contract was also reviewed by the Malhealth, Alcohol, and Drug Advisory Board at its regular meeting on July 12. So to reiterate, the contract is $268,000 for 23 months, 100% state funding, no County General Fund, budgeted in our 2013 and 13-14 budget. So with that, happy to answer any questions and recommend approval.
Supervisor Duran?
Yes. Thank you very much, Maureen. I noticed that you have a consumer on this evaluation panel. How were they, how did you go about procuring that consumer?
We did a solicitation. We do have folks that are working already in various positions, and so probably did a solicitation from the folks that had some experience in terms of assisting with that sort of activity already.
Any member of the public wish to comment or ask any questions on this item? All right. Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Maureen. We'll now move to item 4D. Mark Starr presenting, Animal Services, Local Jurisdictions for Animal Services. You're not Mark Starr. I'm a quick study.[1689.42][1689.42](laughter) Brenda Starr.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Pat Orm. I'm the Assistant Director, filling in for Mark today, of the direct, of the Community Health Clinics and Animal Services Division of the Placer County Health and Human Services Department. I am here to request approval for revenue agreements for the provision of animal services for a three-year period for the cities of Colfax and Lincoln and the town of Loomis, and for a one-year agreement for the city of Auburn. Over the past three years, from these jurisdictions, county animal control officers have responded to over 4,000 calls for assistance related to stray animals, animal bites, and dangerous or wild animals. And during the same time period, over 2,000 animals from these jurisdictions were served by our county shelter. These animals are either reunited with their owners, or they're evaluated for adoption, and all adoptable animals have been successfully placed in new homes. So again, we are asking for your approval of these revenue agreements totaling $294,320. Are there any questions I can answer?
Supervisor Duran?
Yes. I just wanted to confirm down at the end of the board report, it says that there's 100% cost recovery for these contracts?
Yes. This is based on an agreement that the cities worked with the county to develop back in 2005, and we do this through a three-year rolling average, and the goal is 100% cost recovery. And the goal is a hundred percent cost recovery.
That's very good. Thank you so much.
Seeing no other questions, or any members of the public who would like to comment or ask a question on this item? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pat. We will move on to item five, Probation: Electronic Monitoring Program. Marshall Hopper presenting. Marshall, welcome.
Good morning, members of the board, Madam Chair. Marshall Hopper, Chief Probation Officer. This morning, I'm requesting that your board conduct the annual review and approval of our electronic monitoring program rules and regulations pursuant to the Penal Code, Sections twelve oh three point zero one six and twelve oh three point zero one seven. Now, all of our participants on electronic monitoring, whether it's voluntary, involuntary, or pretrial EMP, are assigned to a specialized caseload. This allows for intensive supervision services, including GPS tracking with a transmitter, exactly like I have here today before you. It also includes home visits and field contacts. In addition, participants on our electronic monitoring program are not allowed to leave their residence unless authorized by a probation officer. They are also subject to search and seizure, drug and alcohol testing, and they are not to consume alcohol on the program regardless of their age. Offenders participating on this program are considered to be in custody, serving a jail or disciplinary sentence, and therefore intensive supervision services are essential. Now, during a thirty-day period, our EMP officers conducted four hundred and thirty EMP contacts, and this breaks down to one hundred and twenty-nine home visits, two hundred and seventy-four office contacts, and twenty-seven field contacts, which means they were contacted outside of their home or the office, meaning at work or at a counseling program, and so on. Included in this number is one hundred and three probation searches and eighty-one random urine samples collected during this timeframe. Now, during the intake process, the probation officers review the EMP rules and regulations, which are before your board today. They also review the court orders on each defendant. We direct offenders to appropriate programs based on a validated risk needs assessment, which is completed during each intake. This program holds offenders accountable, and it allows our department to redirect offenders to appropriate programs to address their dynamic risk factors. Electronic monitoring provides offenders the ability to retain their jobs and their family ties while participating on this program, serving their sentence. Now, these concepts are directly related to the evidence-based concepts that are thoroughly embedded in Assembly Bill one oh nine and SB six seven eight. Electronic monitoring is our best tool to provide population relief to our jail while addressing the service demands of our justice system. Program success revolves around the ability to provide offenders opportunities for success at the same time, holding them accountable when needed. Some examples I have, in two thousand and eleven and twelve, there were over one thousand participants on our electronic monitoring program, resulting in thirty-four thousand, two hundred and sixteen offender participation days for the entire year. Now, this breaks down to an average of ninety-three participants on our electronic monitoring programs per day for the entire year. Attached in your board packet, you will find the program rules and regulations, and at this point, I am requesting your board's review and approval of our electronic monitoring regulations pursuant to legislative mandates outlined in the California Penal Code. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time. Thank you.
Supervisor Duran?
Yes, thank you, Marshall. It's a pretty, very comprehensive program and guidelines here. I did have one question, and I want to direct you to page, it's the first page of the program, Alternative Sentencing Program Rules, item number three. And I just have a question, and maybe it'll flesh out something else. This condition says, "I will not possess or have in my residence vehicle any gun, explosive, or other deadly weapon." Does this mean that they could have a weapon other than a deadly weapon?
Well, in looking at the, the concepts of what we consider a weapon, a pocket knife could be a weapon. It could be anything, like, for example, a kitchen knife belongs in a kitchen. If that kitchen knife is in his pocket, then from our point of view, it becomes a weapon. So there is kind of a little bit of discretion and some area there to open for interpretation, but we review each case.
Okay. That's good enough for me. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Marshall, I had one question, actually. Item number twenty-seven on page one oh nine of our board packet regarding voicemail and emergency situations. And just looking it over, I, it kind of strikes me as a catch twenty-two. It says, "The primary use of voicemail is for emergency situations which necessitate my leaving my home at unauthorized times or to request a return call. I understand that leaving a message on voicemail is not authorization to change my schedule or leave home. I must obtain prior approval in person or by telephone from the probation officer to change my schedule." I just, I don't see the first sentence of that and the last sentence of that working together. I see them as being in conflict, the language. Can you clarify that for me?
Yeah, the way that that works is, we have a weekly day for each offender where they're to report and provide their schedule. For example, their work schedule's eight to five and so on. And we do that because it's very difficult requiring, changing schedules within the GPS system, and so we had to set a date. And to keep them from calling in and saying, "I'm working today," or "I'm changing my schedule," that, that we were clarifying with them that, that you may not call and just leave a voicemail. You needed to actually talk to somebody. We also advise them during the intake process that if no one's there, we have a senior and a supervisor. We also have a duty officer on call during the day who's in the office to take in these questions. Because we didn't want them to say, you know, "I'm working late, and that's all that we know." And at the same time, our probation officers are out in the field, and they get an alert from the monitoring company, and they don't know what happened, and they go out and look for this person to take them into custody. So that was the concept behind that. Now, we also have one exception to that rule. For example, if there's an emergency situation requiring medical or someone's sick, that would be the only exception where they can leave the residence without prior approval. But we do have them, and we mandate them to bring a doctor's note or some form of documentation that they were involved in an emergency situation, police report, et cetera.
Okay. I think I absolutely just understood what it was you were saying here and why these are not in conflict. What, what twenty-seven really says is, changing your schedule is not an emergency.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I was just, initially, it just, the first sentence and the third sentence, and that seemed to be in conflict. But emergency situations are one thing, changing your schedule is not an emergency situation.
Yes, that's correct.
Fantastic. Thank you. Any other questions or concerns from the audience on this item? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Very quickly, we're going to do Public Works, item six, Lake Forest Erosion Control Project Area B Highlands. Peter Kratz presenting.
Greetings, Madam Chair, members of the board. Peter Kratz with Public Works. Yes, item six is for a construction contract award number ten thirty-five for the Lake Forest Erosion Control Project. Project details include that the project is located along the north shore of Lake Tahoe, three miles east of Tahoe City, with work to be performed on various county roads. The project objective is to improve stormwater conditions on the county roadways and in the developed part of the watershed, which includes Lake Forest Creek, through drainage infrastructure installation that will result in reduction of sediment runoff into Lake Forest Creek and Lake Tahoe. The project will help county, our, the county meet our Lahontan permit requirements through reduction in fine sediment as a result of project implementation. We will achieve this objective through revegetation and construction of rock line channels, sediment cans, culverts, and detention basins to better control runoff and enhance runoff infiltration. No road closures are anticipated in the project area, which is primarily the Highland subdivision, but some temporary delays may occur. The proposed schedule will be to complete the project by the end of this construction season, October fifteenth, assuming no unanticipated delays. The department advertised bids for this construction back in the spring, and bids were opened on July second, with five bids being received. West Coast Contractors of Nevada Inc. was determined to be the lowest responsive and responsible bidder at approximately four hundred and three thousand, and under our engineer's estimate. The project is cleared environmentally to proceed. Fiscally, the project contract, contract contingency, project construction management, and county labor are fully funded through California Tahoe Conservancy Grants. There are sufficient funds in the department's twelve thirteen fiscal year budget for the contract and other associated and expected costs. Therefore, the formal request of your board is to adopt the resolution as stated in the board packet in the board memo before you, and I am happy, here to address any questions you might have. Thanks for your time.
Okay, I see no questions from the board. I did have a couple of quick questions for you, Peter. In addition to this being one of the EIP projects, Environmental Improvement Program projects identified by the TRPA, does this help us meet the Lahontan TM deal, our NPDS permit requirements?
Yes, it does. Similar, I think, to an item we brought, our other project a few weeks ago for Homewood, very similar in terms of going into our, our roadways and bringing up to better standards for runoff conditions, and clearly does knock off a percentage of meeting our ten percent goal, which is in our five-year Lahontan permit.
Okay. And then I'm looking, there were five firms who responded to this. Were any of them California or Placer County firms? It's, they're not identified in the report, I'm sorry.
You know, I'm, I'm looking at the, you're the same report, I believe, and the closest one is maybe, is probably Aspen Developers.
They're out of Trekey, I believe?
Yes. White Rock Construction is, is, I believe, out of Carson City. So, and I couldn't, I couldn't comment on Ongrade or Gerhart, where they are out of.
Something that was brought to my attention last night at the Forest Hill Forum, and I have not yet had the opportunity to check on this, so forgive me if I'm going down a wrong path here, is, there is a requirement, according to the gentleman at the Forest Hill Forum last night, that companies that we hire from out of state are required to obtain California licenses, California registration for their vehicles when they come in. Do we verify that? And if so, how do we make sure they meet that requirement? And, and I don't even know, is that an actual requirement?
I, I'll say that, I mean, it's, in terms of their contractor licenses, they, and their business licenses, they all have to conform with California requirements, is my understanding. And we double, we check all that through the contract award process. So, but I will verify some of the specifics that you're asking.
Yeah, and this was specifically, the gentleman indicated for vehicles and, and equip, heavy equipment, that it needed to, they needed to be registered and therefore would have licenses in the state of California. And if, indeed, that's the case, I want to make sure we start enforcing that, because obviously, some of our surrounding states have very, very low registration fees comparatively.
Right.
And we don't want to give out-of-state businesses an unfair advantage over California businesses. So if we could verify that, please.
Let me, let me check on that. I've got a note here to do that.
Thank you so much. Any members of the public want to have any questions or comments on this item? All right, seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Peter. Sorry to throw a...
No problem.
...yachtie wrench in there.
No problem. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. We will move to our ten o'clock timed item, which is Facilities Services, Midwestern Placer Regional Sewer. Jim Durfee and Bill Zimmerman and a host of singing and dancing backup to present.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're here today to make some specific recommendations related to your direction on March thirteenth to proceed with the regional sewer project. I'm going to turn the first part of the discussion over to Bill, and then I'll take over about halfway through. Please feel free to interrupt us, ask questions. We're going to go through a lot of information relatively quickly here. We're going to follow the format of the staff report, but please feel free to interrupt us at any time. With that, Bill?
Thank you, Jim. Good morning, Chairman Montgomery, members of the board.
As Jim mentioned, our presentation is going to pretty much match our, our staff report that we've given you. We're going to go through previous board actions. We will give you an update on the project status. We'll talk about the design and environmental review agreement. You'll, you'll hear that referred to as the DIRA as we work our way through the discussions. We're going to talk about the starting negotiations of the construction and initial operations agreement. You'll hear that referred to as the COYA as we work our way through the discussions. And then we're going to present you with some project costs and potential rate scenarios for you to consider. The specific actions that we're asking your board to take this morning are to authorize the chair to sign the design and environmental review agreement with the city of Lincoln in an amount not to exceed six million, sixty-seven thousand dollars. We're asking you to direct staff to negotiate the construction and initial operations agreement for the deal points included in our staff report. We'll be asking you to provide direction regarding rate options for SMD one, as well as the city of Auburn. And then lastly, we're always open to any other direction that your board feels appropriate to give us. Back in March of this year, your board directed staff to pursue the city of Lincoln's offer to complete the regional project, and you also asked us at that point in time to put together agreements with Lincoln and potentially the city of Auburn if they elected to participate in the project, to keep that project moving forward. Since that time, your board has taken a number of actions related to the project, beginning in April, when you authorized staff to apply for an SRF loan for the regional project. At that point in time in April, you also approved a hundred thousand dollar increase to our contract with Capital Public Finance Group for additional financial analysis and to develop the rate scenarios that we're going to be presenting you today. In May, your board approved a one million dollar advance payment agreement to fund the, begin funding the design and environmental analysis included in the Lincoln offer. It became apparent to us pretty early on in those negotiations that it was going to take a little bit of time, and so this was a way to get Lincoln some money upfront to get them started on the design and environmental work. And that million dollars is in addition to a three hundred thousand dollar reallocation that staff put together, moving money from an existing agreement that we had with Jones and Stokes. In May, your board also approved the budget revision, transferring four million dollars into the SMD one regional sewer capital project budget, and you approved agreements with Jones and Stokes and Brown and Caldwell to help us with our review of the environmental and design work. To give you a quick update on the current project status, Lincoln has begun the environmental review process. They have completed the cultural surveys and the initial botanical and wetland surveys that'll be included in the environmental impact report. A notice of preparation for the environmental impact report was released for public comment in late May. That comment period closed in July, and Lincoln is now working on preparing the draft EIR, which is scheduled for release in November of this year. In addition, Lincoln and county staff have met with the federal regulatory and permitting agencies to work through lead agency status on the environmental process, as well as some of the permitting issues that will be involved in. In terms of project financing, county staff has met with the SRF to begin the application process for a new SRF loan that includes the six million dollars in principal forgiveness. The SRF has given us a deadline of May thirtieth to submit a complete application that includes a certified environmental document, as well as completion of the permitting process. They have indicated that we're likely to get a hundred and twenty-day extension, which would take us out to late September, but that if we're extended beyond that point in time, that our, our six million dollars in principal forgiveness will be at risk. Moving into the DIRA discussion, the DIRA, as the name implies, is, handles the design and environmental review of the project. It's based primarily on the Lincoln offer, and the basic premise of it is that Lincoln will complete the design and environmental review for the regional project, serving SMD one, for a, a cost of six million, sixty-seven thousand dollars. That amount includes two hundred and three thousand dollars in services that are intended to maintain flexibility for Auburn to participate in the project, and that is a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars for environmental review of the Auburn pump station, and then the pipeline from Auburn down to the common pipeline, and then designing the common pipeline two ways, one with Auburn's flows included, and then one with just SMD one. And then the DIRA can be amended at any point in time to include Auburn's participation. And then the DIRA can be amended at any point in time to include Auburn's participation. Some of the key terms of the DIRA include the county will reimburse Lincoln for work as it's completed. It's not an upfront lump sum payment, it's more of a pay-as-you-go concept. Previous payments made under the Jones &amp; Stokes reallocation and the advanced payment agreement will be credited against the DIRA costs. In terms of indemnification, neither jurisdiction is indemnifying the other. Both jurisdictions agree to work together if there is a legal challenge against the EIR or any other challenge against the project. In terms of project schedule, the DIRA does not include any provisions for delayed completion. If there are delays in the environmental or permitting process that result in the county losing the $6 million in principal forgiveness, there's no provisions in the DIRA to make up that money. If at some point in time Lincoln elects not to proceed with the project, the county would receive ownership of the design documents and at that point could elect to move forward with it as a county-led project. There are no provisions to recoup any of the money that we've paid to Lincoln to prepare the design. And lastly, any changes in work or changes in scope or cost will be brought back to your board for approval. We do have a, we have received a claim for $129,000 from Lincoln for inefficiencies and delays in getting from March to this point. We're in the process of reviewing that. I don't have a recommendation for you today, one way or the other, but we'll be looking at that and we'll bring that back to your board when appropriate. And at this point, I'm going to turn it back over to Jim and let him talk about the construction and initial operations agreement.
Thank you, Bill. The COYA, as we're referring to it, is exactly what Bill said. It's the actual agreement that will guide how Lincoln and the county work through the construction of the pipeline project, the construction of the expansion of the treatment plant, and the initial five years of operation of the project once we have essentially turned the pumps on and start to flow water down to Lincoln. The COYA outline, and we've just begun discussions and preliminary negotiations on the COYA, so what I'm going to walk you through here is an outline of what it's intended to be and a number of suggested deal points that staff would like any input your board may have on as we walk through the process. And then we will be coming back to your board probably more than once during the process of negotiations for other further clarification. I should point out at the bottom bullet here that we are currently scheduled to approve this particular agreement in May of next year. Your board may remember that we're not able to approve or recommend approval of this agreement or have your board take action on it in an approval until environmental review is complete. It will take us some months to negotiate, no doubt, but we can't actually have you approve it until the environmental review document is ready. So we're substantially basing our negotiations on the Lincoln offer, of course. We are going to try to provide for the construction and construction management, how change orders would work, how that process will work, the flow of documents, the flow of money, pretty much following a normal construction process. We also, as I said, establish the initial operations and governance framework. We will be talking through governance options that your board has heard before, and ultimately this agreement will set the framework for how an ultimate governance structure would be put together. The costs of this agreement are per the Lincoln offer. The base cost is $73,200,000. That includes the DIRA costs that Bill described earlier. And then, of course, there could be additional costs, as in any construction projects, that could be added for changes requested by the owner, by the county in this case, and/or for delays or inefficiencies that are caused by the county, not for delays or inefficiencies caused by Lincoln. I want to walk through some key deal points. Again, these are not deal points that are, I don't want to represent that we're in agreement with Lincoln staff on these in any way. These are just the beginning discussion points for the conversation, but they are framed up in order to try to represent the deal as it was presented to us. Lincoln would complete construction in the startup prior to the county's regulatory compliance deadline of September 2015. Lincoln would be responsible for payment of any regulatory fines resulting from a failure to complete the project by this deadline unless that failure was attributable to delays on the part of the county. The oversizing payment, which is $7,073,380 for a SMD-1 standalone project, would be available for use as a contingency for the regional project. The county would be responsible for any construction cost overruns that exceed that oversizing payment. That is in concert with the deal that's been presented to us all along. The agreement would establish a fiscal disbursement agreement to make payments for the work completed. We haven't worked through what that will be yet, but we have to have a process by which Lincoln would submit to us progress payment requests. They'd be reviewed, and the monies would then flow back to Lincoln on a reimbursement We intend to establish maintenance and operation fees for the regional project, and I'm going to go through a couple of slides in a little bit that talk about what our current estimates for that are. But as a key deal point, we would like to include provisions for an appropriate repair and rehabilitation set aside within our rate structure. The numbers that we're going to present to you in a few minutes are just estimates of what we think that that might be, but what we want to do is lay out at a policy level that this is an important concept, that the partners, as we go into this, are looking forward at what our costs would be, and make a provision within the agreement to establish that we would have the monies available when they need to be available in order to provide for rehab and rehabilitation. This agreement would also establish connection fees for the regional project, and it would include provisions for a study to optimize the timing and sizing of future expansions, essentially a capital improvements plan, if you will, to determine appropriate connection fees. The treatment plant component of the MNO and connection fees would be the same for all users of the treatment plant. And that's not to say that we would necessarily pay exactly the same dollars per EDU. Different communities have different strengths of wastewater. They might have different gallonage per EDU, but what we want is that the calculation and the application of the theory to be the same for all of the partners. I don't think anybody's in disagreement with that, but that's what this provision means. We would want SMD-1 to have an option to purchase up to an additional .4 MGD of treatment capacity, and we'll work through the details and cost of that as part of this agreement. And again, as I mentioned, it would include governance provisions. Moving on to our estimated cost and rates, in the months since March 13th, we've been constantly reevaluating cost estimates. There's been a number of changes that I'll walk you through as compared to what you saw in March, and we've continued to keep the model that projects the MNO fees and the connection fees up to date as things have modified through the process. Our current estimated regional project cost for a combined SMD-1 Auburn project is now That's approximately, I think, about $3, $3.5 million more than what you saw back in March, and I'll walk you through the assumption changes or the cost changes that have led to that. The current MNO rate in SMD-1, what the customers currently pay is $82 a month. That has not changed. Our estimated MNO rate for this particular project at this point in time is $91.62 a month, and the estimated connection fee is $9,501. For Auburn, under this same scenario, their estimated project is, cost is $28,700,000. Their current MNO rate is $60.50 per month, and we estimate that this project would result in a rate for Auburn of $76.14 a month. If Auburn does not elect to come in and we have an SMD-1 standalone project, the cost goes up to $76,364,000. Your board may remember that there's a cost efficiency if Auburn is in, there's a combined pipeline, and we save money if we build that pipeline between the two of us, and that's really the delta there. In this scenario, the estimated MNO rate for SMD-1 would increase to $95.78 a month, and the connection fee would be $97.76. A number of assumptions in our financing model have evolved and changed since March, and I'm going to walk you through what those are. The way that we've allowed for inflation during the project has changed, and we have included also county staff and consultant costs. So those, that inflationary number is really the primary driver behind the increase in the capital cost. A much smaller portion of that is that back in March, we were not including county staff and consulting costs for project management and so forth in the overall cost. The monthly MNO rates have been adjusted to include a $4.50 per month contribution to future RNR. That's what I talked about a minute ago. The $4.50 number is a placeholder at this point in time. It's our guesstimate of what the number would be. What we are suggesting is that in the deal points, in the COYA, that the city and the county work together to develop a capital improvements plan that then flows back into what this number would ultimately, based on that plan. But for the time being, we're using a placeholder of $4.50 in the estimate. And then this is pretty key, the SRF principal forgiveness amount has been reduced from $7.5 million to $6 million. That's based on our interaction with the SRF staff. The SMD-1 service area qualifies for $7.5 million in debt forgiveness under their program, but there's not that much money available in the pot right now. What we've been allocated, what's been held for us in reserve in that fund is $6 million. It turned out that there was not $7.5 million available for us to get. Other assumption changes include that we've further refined the existing user, future user cost splits based on very specific segment costs for the pipelines and specific distribution of those costs between Auburn and the county for the capacities that will be used in that pipeline. It's just refinement of information that we didn't have back in March. It's the same theory, it's just been further refined as we further develop the estimates. The Lincoln oversizing payments, this is a relatively significant change. The Lincoln oversizing payments are intended now to be financed through SRF, which increases our required SMD-1 reserve coverage. And what that, the change here is that in the initial offer, it was assumed that Lincoln would finance those oversizing costs for us. We would make payments directly to Lincoln, not include the cost of that oversizing in our SRF financing. That has changed now. Lincoln would like to have that money available upfront. It means that we're going to have to borrow the money in order to make it available upfront, and because of that, we're going to have to have more reserves available in our, have to have greater reserves available in order to have coverage for the SRF financing. We're borrowing more money, we have to keep more money in reserve as coverage against that. That means that those reserves are not available essentially as a cash down payment into the project. So it changes the financing structure somewhat, increases the amount of debt that we'll have to incur, and it means that we're going to have to hold more money in reserves. And then, lastly, we had a positive impact to the rates was that, you may remember that in the initial proposal from Lincoln, what the sequence of construction was going to be, that they would construct the pipeline first, and then upon completion of the pipeline, they would go into construction of the treatment plant expansion in order to accommodate our flows. We've worked through that at the staff level, and now Lincoln, at the staff level, is agreeable to constructing both the pipeline and the treatment plant expansion at the same time. That eliminates a $3 a month surcharge that Lincoln had requested in order to operate their treatment plant, essentially pushing that envelope above their constructed capacity. So it relates back to a $3 a month savings. That surcharge goes away, so it relates to a $3 a month savings to us. I'm going to walk you through these fairly quickly, but please, they're a little bit confusing, so please feel free to ask questions as we go through this. Taking all of the assumption changes and the financial information and project changes that I've previously discussed into account, we wanted to put forward a couple of scenarios for your board to talk about what the delta between the current rates and the ultimate cost would be, and give you a perspective on what different buy-down scenarios would be, if you will. If we could infuse money into the project from outside of the rate base, how would that impact things? And all we've done here is kind of bracketed the scenarios to give your board a feel for what the scale of that would be, hoping to entertain more conversation about that as we go on. In this first scenario, this is kind of the outside edge of things where we said, what would it take in terms of an infusion in order to keep the rates where they are now? A rate-neutral scenario so that the rate payers are not impacted. I would draw your attention to the column, the second column from the left that says annual cost over 13 years, pardon me, 30 years. If we have a current rate of $82 in SMD-1 and $60.50 in Auburn, it would essentially take an infusion or a subsidy of $917,000 a year for SMD-1 and a little over $1.2 million a year for Auburn, for a total of about $2.1 million a year in order to keep the rates level where they are now. From a capital perspective, certainly inflation, those kinds of things, we're not calculating that into this equation. But we wanted to give you a picture of what that would be. The total nominal dollars and the net present value were there just for your information so you could see over time what that would equate to. But we wanted to put the outside bracket on that, on this, as a rate-neutral scenario. Alternatively, I believe Supervisor Wagon had asked a couple of times, what would have happened if we would have applied 100% of the federal grant funding that we've received for the overall regional project to this project? And so we put together a scenario that shows what the impact, the positive impact to the rates would have been, and then what the delta would have been if we had applied all of that money. We've received about $11.9 million total in grant funds. We've currently got, some of that money has been spent on this project, I believe about a million and a half of that has been spent on the planning for this project and so forth. The remainder of those monies are currently programmed towards the Applegate project, the Newcastle Sanitary District project, which is complete, and the SMD-3 project. So we've distributed those monies among those various projects for reasons I believe that we've discussed here in front of your board before. But if we were to apply that grant money or the equivalent amount of that grant money to this project, what it would result in as a commitment would be the $218,000 per year for SMD-1 and $180,000 a year for Auburn, and you can see what the impacts to the rates would be if we were to infuse that amount of money into this project. Again, it's not a suggestion or a recommendation, it's simply giving you context as to what different levels of contribution to the project would be and what the impact would be to the rates. Finally, we kind of looked at what would be the, an absolute minimum investment required in order to keep the door open for Auburn, either as a current approach or a future approach. And I would say that our opinion is that the critical path issue for that is the combined pipeline. Your board is aware that this is a Y-shaped pipeline, and that some of the stem of that Y would be where Auburn's flows and the SMD-1 flows flow together, and there's a significant savings that accrues to SMD-1 if we build that combined pipeline. We save about $7 million on that side of the project. But if we don't construct that combined pipeline as part of the initial construction, Auburn's future costs would be much, much higher. Hard to predict now, but there's a savings of probably millions of dollars to Auburn as compared to them coming in in the future and either upsizing that or more likely building a parallel pipeline. It's always cheaper to do things the first time than it is to come back and do them later. We estimate that the capital cost to reimburse the county for that extra $200,000 in the DIRA that Bill talked about, and then construct that common pipeline is about $2.6 million at this point in time. So we wanted to just point out that there's about a $2.6 million cost that either could be, it could be Auburn's contribution at this point in time to present. be, it could be Auburn's contribution at this point in time to preserve that. It's a, your board could consider funding that in some way in order to preserve that. It's simply to let you know that that's what the cost of that particular piece of infrastructure would be. Moving on, we are, I think we used the term back in March that we got to pick them up and put them down in order to get this done. And I, I think Lincoln staff and your staff have been doing an admirable job of doing that. We're keeping things on schedule at this point in time. But the schedule has a number of benchmarks upcoming and places where we're going to be either back to your board or submitting things to other agencies and so forth. I wanted to keep you up to date as to what those are. In, we're projecting that in October of this year, we're going to have to be back to your board, starting the rate process. Moving forward on this, we will have to have rates in place to, to cover the debt service before we start to get money from the SRF. So working backwards from the date when we would actually start to, to get money from SRF, and, and considering the schedule for a 218 process, a Prop 218 process, for getting new rates into the tax rolls, all of those things, we would have to start that process, get determination from your board as to what the final approach was going to be, and then get that, that Prop 218 process underway, doing the notifications, the analysis and so forth. That would have to start in about October of this year. In December, we have a timeline to submit our credit review package to the SRF. As I said, in March, we have a Prop 218 noticing that we'd have to undergo in order to meet the requirements of that law. We'd have to do that no later than March of 2013. Have rate hearings pursuant to Prop 218 in April of 2013. We're on schedule right now and projecting that in May, we would certify the EIR, approve the, the construction and initial operations agreement, and have design complete. So that's a, that's a major benchmark right there. If we were to go through the Prop 218 process that I've discussed, the M and O rates would take effect in July of 2013, and sometime over the summer there, Lincoln would be able to start construction on both the pipeline project and the treatment plant expansion. And then our September 2013 SRF funding commitment is kind of our final deadline to get in there and take advantage of that $6 million in, in principal forgiveness. And then ultimately, our projected completion date is September of 2015. So we're going to keep you up to date with the schedule. The project development team is currently on schedule for the work that's under, being undertaken right now. But those are a number of major benchmarks that are upcoming. Again, today, to echo what Bill said, we are requesting a number of actions from your board. The first is that you authorize the chair to, to sign the design and environmental review agreement with the City of Lincoln in an amount not to exceed $6,067,000. I didn't mention earlier, but the funding for this is already positioned in the environmental engineering budget for, it was, about $3 million of it was already there. We put another $4 million in the proposed budget, so the monies are already appropriated for this in the appropriate line items. Secondly, we'd ask that you direct staff to negotiate this COYA agreement per the deal points outline or with any other input that your board may have on those deal points. And third, that you provide staff direction regarding rate options for the SMD one and City of Auburn rates. Going back to the financial discussion we have, if you have any input on that, other scenarios that you'd like to see, other analysis that you'd like to have done, we'd like that direction today. And of course, provide us with any other direction that your board sees fit. With that, I have staff here and consultants. I know Lincoln is here. We're poised to try to answer any questions that your board may have, and I would turn it back to the chair.
Thank you, Jim. Supervisor Holmes.
Yeah, can I get you, go back to slide five, please? Second bullet, the $4 million, where did that money come from? I see it comes from the SMD one upgrade capital project budget. Did that come out of the rate payers?
Correct. That's rate money. It's, it's primarily, where it came from the O and M fees, but there's also, I believe, connection fee money, if I'm not mistaken. So it's a combination of those two fees that came from SMD one.
And the budget revision that we did transferred it out of the upgrade project and into the regional project.
Then go, let's go to slide eight. The $6,067,000, where did that come from?
That would actually be that same money we're talking about.
So all the money that the rate payers have paid in SMD one, and I think we raised those rates in 2006, if I'm correct, and I took the political risk of going out there and talking to all those people, that money will be gone if we move forward with this.
That is correct. We are spending the money that was collected for compliance at SMD one. That's correct.
Okay. Indemnification. Both agencies agree to work together if there's a CECL challenge or other legal action. What does that mean?
It means that at this point in time, there's no agreement. We weren't, we did not come to an agreement on an indemnification clause for the DERA. So there is no formal indemnification between the parties. There's language in the DERA that says that we will work together to determine how to approach a challenge.
So if our contractor, the City of Lincoln, has a challenge on their CECL document, we're going to share the costs of defending that? Is that what's?
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
May I add a, a comment to that? I, I have the same concern that you do. You know, quite often in these contracts, there's mutual indemnification clauses, and maybe this is an area that I'm kind of treading into, that's something that we should be talking in closed session since it is an agreement. County council will raise that issue if it needs to. But yeah, that is a concern, both with regards to the EI, the environmental document, and any of the other documentation that we, or agreements that we enter into with our partners here moving forward. So that's obviously an area of concern for me as well.
And let me third that. I share that same concern.
Okay, I'd like to move to slide 11 then. Delays, is it that, is that on there?
Yes, it's the...
So if there's a delay, who determines who is responsible for the delay? I mean, this can be a potential item of discussion between Lincoln and the county. So who is ultimately going to determine who is responsible for the delay, and how long will it take to work out? That's an unanswerable question, probably.
It is an unanswerable question. I certainly, you know, we would work together to determine what the cause of the delay was, and in, you know, in many cases, it may be quite clear what it was. In other cases, it may not be.
Okay, so that's potential challenge, problem.
Is there, would that be amenable to a dispute resolution provision?
It, it certainly would lead in that direction, yes.
Yeah, that's one of those issues that, you know, we have retained outside council. That's one of those issues that they'll, will protect the county from those kinds of allegations and have a dispute resolution mechanism to address it.
And there is a dispute resolution mechanism in the agreement, the design and environmental review.
That's, that's correct. So that, it would be our intent. We, you know, we're, again, we're just beginning to negotiate this particular COYA, but your, your point is taken. That is one of the potential areas where we could end up in a dispute that would require some specific approach to resolution.
Which would cause a further delay moving forward. I mean, if there was a delay and then we had to go to dispute resolution, that in turn causes another delay.
That is a scenario that could take place. You know, a lot of times in a large construction project, things can continue to go on, work can continue while you resolve things. Some of those disputes could be delayed until the end of construction in order to resolve, but it could also result, it depends on how global that, that disagreement is at, at any point in time.
All right, thank you.
And Supervisor Holmes, before you move off that piece, so this $129,000 claim right now, from March to November, for inefficiencies and delays, this is that exact concern there?
Well, we're not, it is in the, in, to the extent that delays can cost more money.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't make myself clear. So right now, we're in a situation where we're disputing this $129,000 claim, it sounds like.
Well, no, we're at a point right now where we, where we are evaluating $129,000 claim.
I think the staff report says there's insufficient information at this time.
Correct. We, we've only had it for a little over a week. You know, we're looking at it right now. So we don't, we don't have a recommendation for your board on that. We're not at a point yet where we're disputing it. We're still evaluating it.
Yeah, I just, I, I share Supervisor Holmes' concerns about, you know, how we delineate responsibility for delay and inefficiencies.
That's one of the...
This just seems to be, this $129,000 seems to be possibly the first of many.
Well, it is, it's why developing this COYA correctly so that it has the correct processes for submittal of complaint, of claims, evaluation of those, responses back and forth, and then ultimately dispute resolution. Those will be very important tenants in this agreement.
Okay, thank you. Please continue, Supervisor Holmes.
Okay, slide 14. Capacity, so we have what, 1.7?
Correct. Our current flows are 1.7 million gallons per day.
And the project moving to Lincoln will transfer that 1.7?
Correct. And the cost is for that 1.7.
And so if we want extra capacity, we're going to have to purchase that.
That's correct. If we want discrete ownership of additional capacity, we would have to purchase that, and that's what this suggests, is that we, in the COYA, we put together an approach to do that.
And who's going to pay for the increased capacity?
We would have to finance that upfront, and then it would be repaid through future connection fees.
But that's not in the $73 million.
No, it is not.
That's extra cost.
That would be an additional cost.
So any projects that come forward in SMD one could be subject to abeyance because we didn't have capacity? Is that feasibility?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Any projects, future projects that come forward in SMD one, if there's not capacity, we won't be able to process those projects? Is that...
It, it's correct that if there's, if there was not existing capacity at the treatment plant at the time the projects came forward, that they, we would not be able to process those. We don't, I don't mean to infer by this deal point that capacity would not be available, though. It would be. We've, we've scheduled things now so that we don't believe there's going to be a gap in the provision of capacity. What we, what this provision would do would be to discreetly reserve future capacity just for SMD one at a, at a point in time cost. So it might be an opportunity for us to actually stabilize the connection fee for a point in, for a period of time, or, or keep it lower for a period of time because we're pre, essentially pre-purchasing capacity. But I didn't mean to infer to your board that there would be a, some sort of a gap in the availability of capacity because of this. It's more of a opportunity for, to, to purchase than it is, than it is a protection against not having capacity available.
Okay, thank you.
What it, what it certainly does is if we got into a period of really rapid growth in the future, it gives us a, a pretty substantial cushion of capacity to work through the timing of expansion of it, of the treatment plant. So it's...
So the projects that are moving forward in North Auburn, Timberline, Walmart, potentially Costco, there'll be enough capacity at the plant to handle those?
There will be. The .4 MGD was not a out of thin air number. We are projecting that we've got about that much need for capacity in already approved projects in North Auburn. Now, the projected absorption of all of that capacity is relatively slow, but we all, we have about that, that much capacity on the books, if you will, in terms of approved projects in North Auburn. So that's, that's where, how we derive that .4 MGD number.
And Supervisor, can I just ask a quick follow-up question? Because I'm a little, I just need a little clarification as to whether or not those projects that Supervisor Holmes just talked about, are they included in the 1.7, or are they part of the .4?
They're part of the .4. They're not included in the...
They're not included.
The 1.7 is actual, actual, on the ground flow right now.
Okay.
Hopefully, it's not on the...
And how did you, just real quickly, and we don't need to go, you know, very in-depth, how did you arrive at the .4 over?
It's a, it's a calculation of the total number of units that are on the books, calculated back through 200, how many gallons per?
215.
215 gallons per equivalent dwelling unit, and, and multiplied back into millions of gallons per day.
So you're pretty certain that that .4, if we were to go in that direction, would, would be enough, and we wouldn't need more than that?
It would, that would give us a cushion for those projects that are already approved and on the books, and, you know, we, we could always talk in the future about as we eat that capacity up, do we want to pre-purchase additional capacity? It does not get us to build out of the Auburn Boninon community plan area, not even close to that. It would require a number of expansions of the treatment plant in the future to get to that point. This is simply a cushion so that we can be assured that we've got enough capacity for those projects that we've already approved.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you. Now, if we can go to slide 18. Let's go to the one that had all the rates. The, yeah, there you go. Under that scenario, first of all, we've had our strategic budget workshop that told us that our revenues are going to be flat for the next five years, maybe a little bit of growth towards the end of that five-year period. Also, we've been informed that our Middle Fork revenues are not going to be what we were hoping, and maybe, I think it'd be 2015, if I'm correct, we may get about $2.5 million for that. So that concerns me as far as having, if I will subsidize, subsidizing the rates. First of all, in that scenario with SMD one and Auburn project, I would have trouble subsidizing Auburn's rates at $1.2 million a year to fix a problem that they don't have. So I'm not going to support that one. Go up to the next, roll it up to the next.
Did you want me to move to the next slide?
Yeah, SMD one standalone project.
Um...
It was actually at the bottom.
It was at the bottom.
I'm sorry. Apologize. It's down at the, it's the bottom line.
So again, knowing that we, our Middle Fork revenues are not going to be what we expected, and our budget projections for the next five years are not going to be robust, I don't see how we can justify stabilizing SMD one by putting the 1.3 million when we have county core services that are going to be really looking for that money. And again, I think I've said before, any Middle Fork money that comes in, I would like to see in a reverse reserve account until those dollars are built up where we can do grants for different projects as they come along. And then I guess it's the next slide that has the... If we're, there's no way in the world I'm going to go out and ask my rate payers in SMD one to increase their fees. I took a political risk back in 2006, had a community workshop, actually made phone calls to all the rate payers, got a lot of grief from that. So there's no way in the world that I'm going to support raising the fees that SMD one rate payers have paid, particularly when we've had $10 million that we put aside to make sure that we could, that we could meet the requirements of the $6 million forgiveness and have a substantial low-cost interest rate for moving forward with the standalone project. So I think that ends my questioning, and I think everybody on the board knows where I stand on this issue. So thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Drew.
Supervisor Wagenant?
Couple of questions. One, I want to get on early, so Kathy and Holly might have to work, just want to test my calculations, see if they're right. But let's say the board decided to invest $35 million for rate stabilization for, let's say, both Auburn and SMD one. decided to invest $35 million for rate stabilization for, let's say, both Auburn and SMD-1. My calculations are accurate or not, just for the sake of argument, if of that $35 million, we applied $16 million to SMD-1, if I'm calculating things correctly, excuse me, $16 million to Auburn, and I'm assuming that you would recommend that we would have that come from decreases over time, over the 30-year period, to the debt service. But if I did my calculations correctly, the $16 million applied towards Auburn would result in potentially decreasing their rates by about $6.60 and take them somewhat below $70. And then, if the remaining $19 were applied to SMD-1, it would diminish their rates by about $6.60, $64, I think, which would take SMD-1 rates to $84 and about 90 cents. So, if I'm in the ballpark, that's all I need to know, but I wanted to give you, shouldn't leave time if you had to pull out your calculators, just so I can understand.
Can you repeat the Auburn rate that you calculated?
Uh, so, 16 to Auburn, 19 to SMD-1, and the result in Auburn would be a decrease of $6 and about 66 cents, and the decrease to SMD-1 would be $6.64. So, you know, if that's roughly right, I'm good. If I'm like 50% off, I'm not good.
Okay, we'll crank that out and get it back to you real quick.
Thanks. Thanks. So, in terms of other questions, is there, the 40-year financing is not included in any of this rate analysis, correct?
No, it's not, but we do have some projections of what that impact would be. And now, we've got Kathy working on two things. Kathy, get the number, I think.
Set that aside, just 'cause I, I guess my key question since the last time we met, which was a couple of weeks ago, is there any news on 40-year financing? I mean-
There's no news.
Has it lasted two weeks ago? Still a genuine opportunity? It's not certain for sure, but it's-
And we're, we're sending a letter initiating the, essentially, the application process for that and the analysis of it by state board staff.
So, the state didn't call us up and say, "Forget it, it's a dead thing," and?
No, we have not heard that it's a dead thing.
Right. So, and it's not a part of any of these rate calculations?
It is not.
Similarly, you know, based on the 12, 15 years of lobbying that I've been involved in, I would argue, don't wanna speak for Rich and Mike, but the closure of the City of Auburn plant and SMD-1 plant, I think, we're always of the highest priorities in those conversations and in communicating back in Washington our demand for the money. And I know that we've moved money around, and we did a great job with Newcastle, and looking to apply that kind of relief to SMD-3 and Applegate, and reasons I understand and appreciate. But so, the first question is, do we know the amount of money that's actually left in the pool of the almost $12 million?
That is currently unspent.
And, and actual cash that can be applied to one of these solutions?
I, we do have that, and I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know, but we can try to dig that out for you.
Okay, thanks.
The, it's approximately, I know that approximately $2 million, a little less than $2 million, was spent on Link, or on Newcastle. So, there's $2 million gone there. We've spent, I believe, about 1.2 or 1.3 on this project already. So, now, we're up to a little over $3 million of that total gone.
I believe we committed $2 million to Applegate.
I believe so.
Maybe a little bit less. And I think the remainder is gonna be the Corps of Engineers' money that's currently plugged into SMD-3, and I wanna say that's $2.5 million, something on that.
The Applegate money is actually currently encumbered under a contract, and we're spent, we're burning it right now. Construction's underway.
So, I'm a lot less familiar with Applegate and SMD-3 numbers, but presentations by staff to the board, my understanding at least, is that to solve some of those problems, the rate increases, if we were to fund those solutions through rate increases, that'd be prospectively huge for Applegate and SMD-3.
Several hundred dollars per month, yes.
So, staff at one point in time, as it relates to SMD-3, discussed potentially using Middle Fork revenues as a, as a method by which we could backfill that solution. So, I guess, I just wanna be clear that particularly the monies for which we, we still have remaining funds, which might be in about the $4 million neighborhood, I guess.
It's probably in that range, yeah.
And the $12 million that we have, in fact, received, it doesn't really matter if you're looking at the whole regional obligations by the county. If you didn't use the core money for a particular application, there'd be a recommendation to backfill that from some other source, like Middle Fork revenues, or just simply see gigantic rate increases. So, I guess, you know, my appeal is to go through the analysis, and particularly when we get to the rate work that needs to start in October, I think, in all fairness, there ought to be some benefit. Of course, any specific discussion by the board or attitude by the board is relevant, but, but, but in terms of the rate calculations that would be necessary for SMD-1, I think, I would like to see some of that benefit factored in to their existing rate structure, and it would help, at least, with that relief.
And I, going back to your, if I could interject right now, going back to your question about 40-year financing, that would have about a $5 a month impact on the SMD-1 rates. If we were to get 40-year financing and then actually pay the, the money back over 40 years, it would result in about a $5 a month positive impact to the rates. It would reduce that number by about that much.
Thanks. And then, the Middle Fork revenues, I know that they're sort of constantly being reevaluated and tweaked so that we have a current, but last conversation I had, I was not of the opinion that there were any glaring changes in our expectation for those revenues. Am I wrong about that, or? Or if Holly, you could just give us what our current expectation is for those, those revenues and?
Yeah, the revenue, Holly Heinz in County Executive Office. The revenue projection we've been using basically looks at about $348 million over the period of the license. More recently, we're looking at refining those with the reduction in natural gas prices. So, that will bring them down somewhat. I don't think it'll be glaring. I think it's important to understand that those are very gross estimates anyway, in terms of smoothing those revenues over time and rely on hydrology, weather conditions, all sorts of issues that, that the fluctuations will occur regardless. So, I think it's just good to have that understanding going into it. Yeah?
Thanks. And then, just any comment or definition by the board for my colleagues as we go forward? We had a discussion at the last JPA meeting that I think could be helpful, particularly as it relates to the City of Auburn and what the board may or may not wanna do. But I know that Auburn has a genuine concern in that they have invested fairly significantly over the last, I think, 10 years, and, and made some capital improvements to their facility, and have concern about not utilizing fully that investment. And so, in the discussion at the JPA meeting, Bruce is here, he answered the question at the JPA meeting, could answer it again. But if I understood correctly, the offer by Lincoln to the City of Auburn is that Auburn had expressed that they would retain their discharge permit with their existing facility, even if they put their wastewater in a pipe that went down to Lincoln for treatment. And what Lincoln would do is charge them only for the tertiary component of treatment and not charge them for the first two phases. So, it struck me that if that offer were to continue until such time that Auburn's investment literally wore out, they're currently looking at needing to invest over the next five years, something like $5 million, I guess, in an oxidation ditch and some other things, that they would have the opportunity to fully utilize the value of those assets, even though their wastewater is going into a pipe and not discharging into a permit. And at such time that Auburn made an economic decision that it was better for them to walk away from their discharge permit and completely use the system that they have for whatever would be the highest and best use at that time, at that time, then Lincoln would charge them for a more full price for the treatment as per what they're offering to us today. So, if there's any misunderstanding about that, or if I didn't state that clearly, and/or Lincoln doesn't agree with what I said, I want, I think that's important for the board to understand, and for the City of Auburn, if we consider any supplement that we wanna make to Auburn for enticing them to participate in this program now.
Supervisor Wagen, before you move off that, is that presupposing that Auburn would pay the $2.6 million to create that future connectivity, or would actually participate in the project with a pipeline?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is that if they participated today, as per the plan, we built a full pipe system at the costs that are stated, best case, as of today, Lincoln would charge them initially just for tertiary treatment. That's the current offer. So, if that offer lasted until such time that Auburn decided that they didn't wanna do primary and secondary treatment in their existing facility, whenever that happened, if it was 10 years down the, most of us, I think, who've been involved in this, relieved that, kinda gets back to the statement of fixing a problem that Auburn doesn't have, Auburn's fine for five years, maybe 10 years. If requirements in new regulation do kick in as it relates to personal hygiene issues and pharmaceuticals, then they're gonna have to replicate some of the investment at their plant that Lincoln has and/or can expand more cost-effectively. So, there'll be some point, if you think back to those rate increases that we saw articulating charges from 1990 through current, you know, the bigger plant rate increases are just smaller. So, there'll be, if that trend continues, which I think everybody agrees will, there'll be some point where it's just more economical for Auburn, after fully utilizing what they've invested in currently, to abandon that more fully and buy all of their treatment in Lincoln, because that will be cheaper than replicating a lot of what Lincoln has in its current site on their site.
Okay. So, I just wanna make sure I understood what the nugget that was in there. You're presupposing that Auburn participates fully, builds the pipeline, but underutilizes it for some period of time, until such time as they take their plant fully offline and then use the full capacity of the pipeline?
I think that's right. Maybe specifically, Auburn would join in the regional solution fully today, at the costs that are articulated. They would currently just buy tertiary treatment in Lincoln, and they would have the option to continue to buy just tertiary treatment in Lincoln until such time that they would want to abandon utilizing their facility for primary and/or secondary, or some kind of combination of treatment at this point in time.
Thank you.
And thereby, would have the opportunity to fully utilize the investments they've made over the last five or 10 years.
And if I may, the costs and the rates, both, that are presented in our staff report, contemplate that operational scenario. That is, that's what it's based on.
But, but I think we were able to affirm that that was Lincoln's offer, and that that would still be on the table, and Auburn would be able to buy tertiary treatment in Lincoln 50 years from now if they so chose. But I think most of us think that it would discontinue somewhere between now and 10 years.
Madam Chair, can I, can I interject?
Yeah.
This is a great, robust discussion about, you know, what ifs, but, and looking at the action that's requested, I think we can get through one and two, but it sounds to me that we can't hit three until we understand exactly where-
I totally agree.
Auburn is in this, because I know that there was a point in time when we talked about certain savings to them if they decided to jump in. Is there a, is there anybody from Auburn here? And I'm not asking you for a policy, to speak on behalf of the entire board of where you're at, but it's, it occurred to me that we were supposed to have some kind of meeting of the minds here as to where Auburn was with regards to their financial position and what we were, what we would or may be willing to do to assist Auburn's desire to come into this project, if that's what you wanted to do. So, I guess I'm kinda wondering, number one, where are we with that discussion? And number two, is there a drop-dead date where we have to know before we move forward on our own?
You know, if you don't mind Bernie, I'll take the first piece of this.
No worries.
We've worked a lot with Auburn staff, with Bernie and, and the finance folks at Auburn. We've really refined the financialist information. I think we're on the same page as far as what all the numbers say in terms of Auburn's rate structure, what kinds of reserves are available, all of those kinds of things. So, we've progressed on that level. We've had a meeting with the city manager and with Bernie where we further discussed where the city would be, and frankly, I think right now, the city is waiting for the county to essentially make an offer as to how much we are willing to work with them to help them out financially on the, on the project. And they've committed that the city council would consider that very rapidly, should the board decide to do that. So, we, we have not negotiated a number, which maybe was all of our hope, that we would be able to do that, but we've not negotiated a number. But we do have a commitment from the city manager and from Bernie that if we, if we bring an offer to the table, that the council would hear it and contemplate it in, in a really rapid fashion.
Comment, take it anywhere you want, but it sounds to me, in us making an offer, we're kind of negotiating against ourselves. So, I, I don't know, you know, I'm real uncomfortable with that. I'll just leave it at that.
Well, I might as well say something since I'm here. Bernie Schroeder, Director of Public Works. I will echo what Jim has indicated. The city council, more than once, has indicated their desire to participate in this project, is a potential option for compliance in the future, whether that be five years, 10 years, 20 years. I think it is a sentiment of the majority that we allow the project to progress so that we are participant up until a point where we have to decide whether or not it would not allow us to continue onsite. Then there would be, certainly, I look at this, and I think others do also, it's a certain amount of investment. If the city were in a compliance pickle, this would be looked at very carefully. $200,000 plus or minus for the design is, what I'm hearing is one of the options that is out there and is included with what the county is offering or describing, if you will. I could view that as an investment, because it allows a much cheaper option when and if that happens. So, that's really is a sentiment of the council, is to continue on this path until it, it doesn't take, either it goes one direction or the other. But they are interested in what the board is saying today, of course, and the recommendations that come out of this will be within a 30-day plus or minus period, brought forth to the city council for consideration.
Supervisor Holmes?
So, just to be clear, the City of Auburn is in compliance as we speak?
Yes, we are.
And you have the funding of your, I guess, funding available, or will be available for the oxidation ditch that is gonna be required later on?
We are still looking at how that funding would unfold. We're looking at preliminary design of that oxidation ditch probably next year, pending the outcome of some of the activities that are going now with the regional project. There would likely be the ability, again, we haven't completed the financial analysis, but certainly, it's a lot different project trying to finance a $6 million oxidation ditch versus a $27.8 million regional project. So, there may be a rate increase, and the hope is that they've overestimated the cost once we got closer to it. Again, it's an unknown figure, but-
So, it'd be fair to say the city's just waiting for a proposal from the county? And I think that's what we're here for today.
I think that's fair to say, that they are anxious to move on and get through the process.
Bernie, before you go, there's this sort of third scenario, this, what's called the minimum Auburn buy-in of this $2.6 million that would cover the 200, I think in one place it's $203,000, in the other place it's $200,000, in design and environmental work, and also pay the pro-rata share of the common pipeline. So, that's the $2.6 million.
Correct. Correct.
That would position Auburn to at some point in the future if they decided to come into the regional pipeline to then do that. Is that something that you think the City of Auburn would be able to move forward with? If I recall, you guys have about 2.3 million, I think, in your, in your, your fund right now?
Well, it depends on how we would cater it up. We don't have quite that much in reserve. The, the scenario that we see playing out is there would be an opportunity for that 2.6 million to be decided on at a later date and correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't want to try to interpret the staff report, but from what just the schedule dictates is that allowing the continuation of the environmental review and the design with the 203,000 and then at the point when, when bid documents are, are out in the street and that's an alternative to, to do that work, then the council again could be at a point of decision on it. I personally don't believe that it's a time that the council has to decide on 2.6 million, but that's certainly their prerogative if, if that was something or an alternative that they'd like to decide on.
And I could, I could weigh in from a scheduling standpoint. What the recommendation in the DERA does today is it provides for the environmental review and design of the combined pipeline as a combined pipeline and as a standalone pipeline for SMD-1. The intent being that you could then, when we go out to bid, bid that, bid the pipeline both ways and the final decision point would have to be made at the time that we award the contract for the construction. So I think Bernie is correct in, in that what, what the staff recommendation on the DERA does is it preserves that option for approximately about a year is what it does.
Okay. Bernie, I know you guys are totally in compliance at the moment and that you are looking forward to doing some onsite upgrades. I know this board and the county got a lot of pressure from the state water board to go to a regional solution rather than upgrade or do a stay-at-home. Does your board or do you envision that same thing coming to Auburn even though you're fully in compliance now?
I think it's a desire of the regional board. It's been made very clear at the staff level and certainly the executive officer that they would like a regional project. It does a lot of things that in particular it combines so that there are less permits. In the case of Auburn, as it was discussed by Supervisor Wegant, the offer that Lincoln has made includes partial treatment, that's secondary treatment. The City of Auburn would have to retain as the, the provider or the discharger or the one who created the effluent, we would have to maintain the permit. I don't think the board necessarily thinks that's a bad thing. So they have weighed in on regional as a solution eventually down the road, but they do not seem, I haven't, I haven't heard where they have discouraged the ability to partially treat, secondary treatment is what it specifically is at our plant for that to continue. It allows for not just the, those times when in fact we don't have minimum flows in the ravine, that helps with our environmental document, and it also helps in the case of an upset plant for any reason. So they've indicated to us, unless Bruce has other information, they don't have a problem with it being a regional project, but there being a tertiary treatment or a secondary treatment at our plant. If that's answering your question.
Yeah. Have there been any public discussions at, at the city council level about this 2.6 million and leaving open that future potential to connect?
They have not been given a number and personally I don't know what that number represents, so I haven't presented to our council. I think they have, maybe informally, they've got a good idea to keep all options open. Now whether or not it's a price tag that they're willing to consider, I, again, I would like to see that that came a little further down the road because it's not something that we have to decide right now. And it would likely dramatically impact our ability to stay onsite.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the long and the short of it.
Yeah.
That's a big chunk of a $6 million project.
Supervisor Holmes?
I don't have a question for Bernie.
Supervisor, you look.
So what is the official position of the City of Auburn at this time in terms of participating in a regional solution?
Well, I can only speak from what the council has acted upon.
Right.
There is unanimous desire on the part of the council to continue participating in the regional project as long as there is either some form of subsidy or rate neutral effect on the ratepayers. That is what I have heard. Now, they also are, much like your board, of course, not in big favor of raising the rates. I've certainly heard that. It's been difficult even to implement the last rate increase to go to the $60.50, which if I recall, it was previously 58. So a $2 increment increase, I'm not going to tell you, was a slam bang. It, it certainly wasn't. The council took it very seriously. So that is the official position of the council is that they would like to keep the options open in consideration. They don't want to miss this train. They, they also see this as a huge opportunity, maybe a once in a lifetime opportunity to get on. So they don't want to just shun it away and not give it its full deserved attention.
So please don't let me put any words in your mouth, but staff's interpretation of council's action is that council is willing to participate if there's no impact on the ratepayers of the City of Auburn?
I would say no is the only word that is, I don't want to necessarily state if it is absolutely no cost to the ratepayer and we, and the ratepayers of Auburn have nothing but to win. I think there is an awareness that the cost of compliance is going to increase and it's a certain amount of guesswork. So what their appetite or what their comfort level will accept as far as an increase is really not been decided, certainly with the next action of council on this subject may provide more direction, but I, I really don't want to speculate or speak for the whole in stating that they would not allow any rate increases. I just didn't hear that.
As far as the last formal action taken by the council, my recollection was unless there's something happened since March 13th, the last formal action that was taken by the council and was represented to our board in that March 13th meeting was that Auburn is interested in participating if there was a way that it wasn't impactful to your current rate structure. Has there been an action taken since the March 13th meeting?
No.
Okay. So that, my recollection is clear on what, and if I recall, that was sometime back in December of last year that your council met and had that conversation. Good. Thank you.
Supervisor Duran?
And if I may, I just want to add, I'm still waiting to hear what Auburn wants to bring to the table to help with, make this happen. And that's, that's really confusing for me to hear that, you know, Auburn is waiting for the county to provide, you know, the impetus for it to join in on the project.
Well, if I could maybe bring to light that the city council has more recently in the last two years made some financial commitments to the regional project, which they hadn't before. It was simply funded, not simply, but it was funded by the federal government. I, I don't remember the exact dollars, but they contributed to the Placer Nevada Waste Water Authority executive officer salary. They contributed to the value engineering study that was conducted by Lincoln. Those in the minds of staff indicate their willingness to contribute, to continue to contribute in some fashion. Again, there's other options that the, the city has that they don't necessarily, they're simply not in the same position as the county as far as making a decision. So I'm not going to in any way apologize for the options that we have provided the council, but they do have them and that's what makes it so difficult is it isn't one thing and or another and they're fairly close, that the delta, as it's been described, is, is much less for the county.
Does anyone have anything else for Bernie before we move on?
Oh, I just wanted to point, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Point out to Supervisor Yule, I was at that meeting, I suppose Robert Wegant, when the, when the city made the decision and the resolution states that it is the expectation of the City of Auburn that subsidizing their participation and no increase in the ratepayers of the city. So that was, I remember the word expectation, it kind of struck me. So anyhow, that was the last official action of the city council.
If I, if I may Supervisor, I actually have the resolution here. It says, whereas the City of Auburn expects to be granted the capital cost of the project. That's where the word expectation is.
That being the 27 million?
Whatever the cost.
It doesn't define a number.
Okay.
And that was January 23rd, 2012.
Supervisor Wegant?
Yeah, I just want to offer up some perspective, so I could get myself in trouble and speak out of turn or misrepresent this position, but Bill Kirby, for, for one, as an example, at the JP meetings, as Rhea currently said, he would certainly increase rates to go regional. I don't think he knows what that delta is, but Bernie, you've heard him say that on several occasions, but, so Bill can call me up and yell at me if I, if I misrepresented his position. I've also heard Bridgette say the same thing, so there are two votes, what that amount is again, I don't know. I think the council, my conversations with Bill, Bridgette, particularly as it relates to the JPA work, they'd be receptive to working through this in any kind of a logical, normal manner. I mean, they're looking for us, I think, because we are the ones who have the authority over the Middle Fork monies, so they're not, you know, they can't, they don't have decision-making authority over that. I would sure hate to see the board not have that conversation for lack of having some good healthy communication. So I don't want us to predispose, I would hope for sure that we wouldn't predispose the council's going to do something or not without at least setting up some kind of formal process by which we could engage and have that, and have that conversation because I believe that, that there is a threshold that it's likely that the council, obviously speaking about five different people, would, would likely or very seriously consider increasing rates to go regional now. And I would point out that there would be some intelligence on our part for about, if Auburn does not go regional now, it's going to cost us more based on today's best numbers, $7 million, $7,60,000. So we would be cost neutral if we backfilled that into the system to help with rate stabilization for Auburn and in being cost neutral on our side, we would have a grander solution. We have two parties currently at the table today. There would be some more likely economies of scale that would result from all of us being involved in the process today, some benefit to Lincoln. So I understand the dynamics of not wanting to put too much on the table and making sure that everybody's got everything that they possibly can invest in this. I'm very receptive to that. I just, from what I'm hearing and, and conversations I've had, I have concerns that we don't predispose something and not engage at least in a process to try to resolve that, that's most intelligent for all the people involved.
Madam Chair, quickly, maybe we can help bring that to a head then. Is staff willing to request that the mayor place an item on the council's agenda having this conversation? Where the council would meet to discuss the council's willingness to increase rates? I mean, we have the numbers. We, we show where rates would need to go without any subsidization and then we show what the total cost to the county would be to keep rates where they are. And so in the interest of Supervisor Duran's comment about us not negotiating against ourselves, somewhere between the total cost absorbed by the county and the ratepayers of Auburn picking up something, perhaps there's a number that council is willing to begin discussing. Is, is staff prepared to recommend to the mayor have that conversation?
Well, with all due respect, that's exactly what we're preparing to do. Our intent is to come out of the action that is provided and the direction that's provided from the Board of Supervisors today with a presentation to our council as to what is being discussed and what, if anything, is being offered. That in essence will bring us to that point of closure, if you will. If the county is unwilling to subsidize the Auburn participation in the project, I would say over the 203,000 that's described in the design and environmental, then that's an item that will be brought forth and the council will be asked to provide direction. Unless I'm missing something, that's exactly what I've been told to do.
I think it's, I think it's perhaps an order of the conversation. In other words, I don't think it's appropriate for the county to show up and say, we're going to pay all $35 million. I, I think it's more an issue of, the county has indicated a willingness to work with Auburn to figure out how we might be able to, and that's assuming that there are three votes here, we might be able to stabilize the rates, but what level of rate stabilization does Auburn need to see in order for us to be a participant in this? Do we, are we tolerant of a rate increase of 10%, 50% of the, of the projected cost? In other words, will we participate up to a certain level? Because I, I mean, I will tell you very candidly, first of all, the resolution from the council, the resolution clearly says the expectation is that the county pays the whole thing. And so that's the last formal action taken by your council. So I'm, I'm just, I'll be very curious to see if, if council's willing to entertain a conversation that actually puts a number out there that says that we are willing to take a rate increase of X number of dollars to our ratepayers in order to participate in this regional solution.
And just to add to Supervisor Yule's comments here, right now what I see is a poker game. What I'd like to see is a business deal. It's that simple.
Well, if I could, I really think that this project has been quite plagued with an over-attention to Auburn's participation to the extent where the real issue is, are there, is there the desire of the board, and this is what our council is asking for, to partially subsidize and make the offer sweeter because again, there are options that the council or that Auburn has. It is a business decision. I wouldn't say that it's quite a poker game, but at the same token, there has been an unusual amount of attention given to Auburn's participation, probably because it would allow for some cost savings to the county. That's been documented in the proposal and it's just potentially increases the benefit from a economy of scale. So I really think that the council is more than willing to, and they have expressed this, to make a decision if they know the parameters in which are being offered. So we could continue to kick the can down the road, but in fact, I hope it is our desire that it doesn't get overshadowed by the real decision and the, and the fact is, is the project is a regional project and has some very appealing attributes for all agencies, even ones that are in compliance.
And, and as I've said before, I have an open mind about contribution and subsidy, but still, you know, I'm still at that position where, you know, it sounds to me like the county is, you know, has to basically roll over and make an offer in order to entice the council to come in and, and make a decision. I'd like to see a little bit more of the discussion and the collaboration between what the county has and the, and the attributes of the regional project and what Auburn is willing to participate in contributing to make this deal work.
Well, this.
That's all I'm asking.
Supervisor Yule?
Madam Chair, if I may, and at, at the risk of being perceived as killing the messenger.
Well, please don't.
For you to say that this project has been plagued with an over-attention to Auburn's participation, when I sat here on March 13th and had your mayor upbraid me for even considering a stay-at-home option that would provide lower a stay-at-home option that would provide lower rates to our current rate payers that didn't have a regional solution, to have your mayor sit here as aggressively as he did coming at our board for even considering that option, that's what injected you guys into the game. Because I personally am perfectly happy not having a conversation with Auburn about this at all, and I have a solution, we have a solution in front of us that allows for that. It was the insistence by your mayor that put the focus on Auburn and Auburn's participation. Again, at the risk of killing the messenger, but that's, let the record actually reflect what, how we got to this point.
Well, and if I could, I don't want to ignore the 10-plus years that the City of Auburn has been a participant with the Plaster Nevada Wastewater Authority. I would like to say that that kind of attention was deserving and that there, it was, had the decision, we'd be at a different point five years ago before the city just recently spent $6 million on compliance. This would have been a smaller pill to swallow, but time did not allow for that, and as we all know, the story, it gets complicated and there are a lot of decisions. So I certainly believe that Dr. Kirby feels strongly about his position, I'm certainly not going to try to describe it, however, it is certainly our intent to move forward with whatever action this board makes.
Supervisor Holmes, your light is on.
I didn't have another question for-
Supervisor Weigant, did you have something for Bernie?
Yeah, I might be missing something, but Bernie, you can add anything you like. I think we're missing a process, I think that's the link that's, I believe, that if we could do, Jerry can direct us, but we can put together a ad hoc committee, a couple of us and a couple of council members, I'd be willing to be involved in that. I think there's a solution here, and I appreciate the concerns that we would all want to be sure that Auburn is making every effort they can financially and otherwise to make this work, but I think in an hour, we could, one, learn that, and I'd be willing to bet there's a solution out there that brings everybody to the table today within a threshold that's acceptable to the board. So something to ponder as we resolve that, but I think we're simply missing a process to get this completed, one way or the other.
And Bernie, before you go, I think this is somewhere between a poker game and a negotiation, a contractual negotiation, hopefully at some point in the future. Where I'd be coming from on this is, I'm uncomfortable with the language in the resolution because it really does pretty clearly put an expectation that the county will pay for the capital costs. Let's just say that the capital costs are 27 million, that's just a number I'm going to pick, okay? Let's just say that there is this difference of 7 million if Auburn, 7 million to the county, that Auburn, if Auburn does not participate versus Auburn's participation. So let's call that 20 million. Based on 20 million as a starting point, what I would like to hear is what Supervisor Yular and Supervisor Duran are asking for, which is something from the city council saying, okay, here are really, here's really what we could live with. Yes, our expectation, our hope is that the county's going to pay for all of that, that's a great starting position, but what I'd like to understand is, what really are the sideboards? If the sideboard is really the county has to pay all 27 million, I don't think we have a discussion in front of us, but if there's a discussion that that's not the starting point, we need to understand that. And I don't think the city council needs specific direction from our board to have that discussion internally. The idea that rates will never go up is just unrealistic on our part and the part of the city council, they are going to go up. So to say we want to see something absolutely rate-neutral, you know, the county's got to stay at 82, the city's got to stay at, I don't know if my glasses on, 60/50, you know, I think that's an unrealistic starting point for all of us. So my question is, is what is a rate structure that the city could live with? We've had the internal discussions, I think, about what is a rate structure, though we haven't reached an agreement, but we're having those discussions and we're having them publicly. What is a rate structure that the county can live with? I think really what Supervisor Yular is asking for is that the city council have that same discussion in a public forum. Am I wrong in that Supervisor Yular? So that's just kind of my starting point for, I think, where a valuable discussion can move forward, and we're obviously willing to have some discussion about, does the county subsidize that rate, at what level? But until we understand at least the gross parameters of what the city council is willing to live with, I'm not sure how we can have that discussion. Supervisor Holmes?
Clearly, the city council needs a starting point, and that's our job to give them something to work with. And so that's why, I think that's why we're here. Again, I already told you that I wasn't going to support any subsidizing of the City of Auburn to fix a problem that they don't have, particularly in lieu of the flat revenues that we have, and again, the Middle Fork projections aren't there. So, but if the board wants to give the City of Auburn direction, I think that would make a big deal about moving this forward. So that's up to, again, I think that's why we're here.
I think the difficulty for the board in making this decision is, it's being made from the board's perspective in the context of a compliance deadline. So, you know, the first item on the agenda today, adopt the attached resolution authorizing the DERA, is the action that the board needs to take to keep the project on track so that, you know, our options don't fall away as we go. And the third item that we've been talking about is a provide direction regarding project funding alternatives for SMD-1 and for the city, and I don't know that the board has given that direction for SMD-1 or for the city. So, and, you know, that will just start the chain of, how do you develop a financial mechanism to provide that contribution to those projects?
I think that's an excellent observation, and it brings up that suggestion by Supervisor Weigant that we have this discussion. That's the only way I see us getting past, even approaching, number three.
Jerry, would it be your suggestion that we adopt one and direct two and maybe not do three? I think we've done four, provide staff some direction, I think we've given a lot of input here, I'm not sure it's really direction, it's sort of more input at this point. But is three something we necessarily have to do today, or is that something that is subject to maybe those conversations that Robert was suggesting, some city council discussions in public, and then moving forward with that piece, number three, at a later date?
Madam Chair, I've asked my questions of the City of Auburn, I haven't asked my questions of staff yet.
Okay, and I'm not done, I'm not wrapping anything up here, I'm just putting that out there as an option, that we may not actually have to do all of these four things today.
And I wasn't, I didn't make my intent for my comments to cut off any discussion here, because it is important discussion here, because the timeline, if the DERA is approved, the county will start incurring the expenses doing the environmental and design study, and so you're postponing a decision only in the shortest period of time possible because you want to keep this project on track so that we can both meet the deadlines required for the loan forgiveness and meet the bigger deadline required for the compliance with the state water board. And that's why number two is also an important aspect to this discussion, is we want to know what, staff wants to know what the deal points should be as we negotiate that, Coria, because we're not going to negotiate it after the design and environmental review is over, we're going to negotiate it now so that we understand by the time we get to that point that we have an agreement that protects the county from any liability, or as much liability as possible.
Supervisor Yular, your light's on.
Thank you, and while I appreciate the conversation in regard to Auburn, I truly believe the Auburn conversation is secondary to what Jerry steered us right back to, and that is what's being asked of us in regard to the design and environmental review agreement. And my concerns along those lines lend themselves to, number one, the whole issue of the indemnification, it's already been brought up by a couple of our supervisors, the concern that I, when we talked on March 13th, and, you know what, I'm sorry, let me take a step back, I was just reminded of something, I need to take a step back on one point. Subsequent to our March 13th meeting, I received an email from somebody who attended the meeting, a member of the public, somebody that I've known a long time, who suggested that perhaps my favor for a stay-at-home solution with an owner-operator that wasn't the county, might, at least the implication of the email, was that it might have something to do with a, perhaps a contribution received, something along those lines. And so, just for the record, I have never received a contribution from PERC. I did, after the March 13th meeting, have a fundraiser, Mr. Aragon did attend, he did write me a check for $250. I've directed my staff in preparation for this meeting to write a check back to Mr. Aragon for $250. So I have received no compensation, any way, shape, or form, by way of campaign contributions from PERC, Mr. Aragon, anybody affiliated with this. So hopefully we can dispense with that silliness at this point. Now, to these issues. I couldn't have been any more clear, and granted I was on the downside of a 3-2 vote, that this was the City of Lincoln's proposed project to the county. And my primary concern in this being the City of Lincoln's proposed project to the county is, fine, I don't want us to have any of the responsibility associated with it, I don't want us to have any of the liability, if they're proposing the project, that's great, we'll pay, we'll pay our fair share, we'll do all that fun stuff, but it's their project. And my biggest concern going through some of these bullet points, including what happens if we miss our deadlines, we lose the $6 million, I got to tell you, unfortunately, the biggest intangible that we have right now, and, you know, I look at my friend Spencer sitting out there with whom I've enjoyed working over the past few years on a number of different things, biggest concern I have right now is a November election. And my single biggest concern is what happens if we've put this money out there and that council changes hands and unilaterally declares that they want to stop work on this cooperative project with the council, and I always say that because the reactionary nature of, unfortunately, what we've seen from some of the folks in that area, against a lot of the good work I believe this council has done on PCCP, on other regional cooperation efforts, I am very concerned. Where is the county financially if a future council shows up and decides, we're done, we're out? What I read here is, well, we have a nice work product. Great, is that all we have for spending our money? We have a work product that's meaningless because we now have nothing to apply it to? So do we have any recourse? Is there any recourse in here that binds future councils into an agreement where they are on the hook financially to reimburse us if they pull out of this agreement after we say we're going to go ahead and spend $6 million?
The simple answer to your question is no, there is no protection from that in the agreement as it's drafted.
You know, I can sit with Auburn and Lincoln all day long with the council that exists today and have these conversations, but that's my, really my biggest concern, is what happens after a November election if we're not dealing with the same people? How is the county protected? On page 12 of our staff report, we have the bullet point about the option to purchase an additional 0.4 million gallons a day. What impact does that have on the rate structure that you then break out? That's not reflected.
It is not reflected, it's an option that your board can consider as we go forward, it would require separate financing from what's been discussed today in terms of the rates. The major implication to that, or really the implication would be to the connection fees. The connection fees, it actually probably ultimately has, in the long run, a positive impact on the connection fee because we're essentially fixing the cost of capacity for sometime in the future, but in the meantime, the connection fees would be what would have to be pledged as revenue for the debt service, and then I think secondarily, the M&amp;O fees would have to be pledged behind that. What that means is that in the event that adequate connection fees to make the debt service don't come in, we would ultimately have to go back to the user fee base, much like the conversation we've had recently about the South Placer Wastewater Authority in order to cover any deficit or delta between incoming connection fees and the annual debt service. So it has an indirect, potentially an indirect impact on the M&amp;O fee, and the connection fees would be pledged to repayment.
So, but right now, what you're saying is that you don't foresee the necessary acquisition of nearly a half million gallons per day as having an impact on rates?
Not on the, not directly, we would not directly increase the M&amp;O fee in order to pay for that because it's capacity for future users. The debt service would be structured such that the first line of revenue that would be pledged would be connection fee revenue.
Have we had conversations yet? Do we have any answers yet in regard to the issue of replacement water costs?
There's an estimate of the cost based on an estimated amount of replacement water, that cost would be borne by SMD-1.
And is that already built into these rates, or would that be added to these rates as they're presented?
I believe that the estimated cost is already included in this.
Or is it included?
It is.
Okay, and do we know, can we break that out? Do we know what that water cost is for the replacement water?
It's in the range of about $100,000 a year, right now, we're not spending quite that much on it, but it's in that range.
And then you touched on this, again at the bottom of page 12, you touched on this, but if you could help me understand it, the statement at the bottom, Lincoln has stated the county's flow and loading are approximately 30% higher than the city's, and as a result, the treatment portion, the regional connection fee, may increase by 30%?
Correct.
Okay, help me understand that.
What that gets at is that all wastewater is not equal. There's different strengths of wastewater. Currently, the data looks like the county's, SMD-1's wastewater is approximately 30% stronger in terms of biological demand than is Lincoln's. So the, if you could think about it, to make a very simplistic comparison, it's just the amount of organic material and dirt that's in the water that has to be removed, and so there's, the cost of treatment is directly related to that loading, if you will. There's a higher level of loading in SMD's wastewater than there is in Lincoln's. So as long as the, what I was getting at in terms of equity is, as long as on a per-loading basis, we're all paying the same, that's equitable. That doesn't mean we pay the same dollar amount if our water is essentially dirtier than theirs is. Does that, does that explain that to you?
And then the issue of utilizing Middle Fork dollars for this, and the $35 million investment that I believe one of your slides showed, I believe it was the slide before this, was-
It was the slide before this one, I believe.
I was looking at $35 million investment. And, you know, I've sat here, and I've been one of the ones that's argued in favor of utilizing Middle Fork dollars for capital improvements. However, I believe that, number one, as I stated, that those Middle Fork dollars should be utilized for capital improvements that actually create economic opportunity through direct investment in infrastructure that then spurs private sector investments, road interchanges, access to water sewer where none currently exist, those kinds of things. And I look at the cost of the $35 million investment in this, what's the opportunity cost associated with that? What could we otherwise do with that $35 million where a viable alternative exists for this? You know, when we talk about, I guess, SMD-3, we have no viable alternative. We have to put that stuff in a pipe and get it to SMD-2, we don't have a viable alternative. Here we have a viable alternative with a stay-at-home solution that doesn't require the investment of $35 million, doesn't cost us that, and doesn't incur the opportunity cost associated with what we could otherwise be doing with that $35 million in terms of actual investment in the ground, in our Sunset Industrial Area, or in other areas as I've discussed before. You know, for me, this still comes down to- You know, for me, this still comes down to an opportunity that the board still has to grab hold of a solution that gets us out of the wastewater management business in a stay-at-home opportunity that actually decreases rates by 12% as opposed to, while this does get us ultimately out of the wastewater management business at SMD-1, it shows an immediate increase of 17% with no additional capacity that we don't have to pay for in the future. And so, this is, you know, for me, all the same dynamics are still here that we're still dealing with, that we dealt with in March, and so, those are my comments. Thank you.
Supervisor Holmes?
Now that we're looking at rates again, could you give us the rates that were proposed under the SOMAS proposal and the PERC proposal? What were the monthly rates? I think they were gonna be a little bit less.
Actually, I have, I have in front of me a slide that was used during the PowerPoint presentation on March 13th, and I'll just read you the numbers off of them. The SOMAS design was for a 2.7 MGD treatment plant that was financed with SRF financing. The capital cost to move forward on that was $58.6 million. It would have, the projected rate, O&amp;M rate, was $73.03 with a connection fee of $11,152. We had a number of different proposals from PERC Water. I'll just read one of them. The smallest option was a 2.1 MGD treatment plant, again, financed with SRF financing. The capital cost moving forward was essentially the same as the SOMAS design. It was $58.7 million. It would have resulted in an O&amp;M rate of $76.66 and a connection fee of $4,377. So, it had a smaller connection fee, slightly higher O&amp;M fee. The regional project with Auburn in, the one we've essentially been talking about today, 1.7 MGD, SRF financing. At that point in time, the projection was for a $66 million moving forward cost. As I've articulated today, that's gone up somewhat. The rate that we were projecting at that time, the O&amp;M rate, was $82.24 a month, and the connection fee was $10,426. And I think I've been through why this assumption change, assumptions have changed. I would caution you that on those previous numbers that I've given you, we have not done any further analysis of those. We've not changed any of the assumptions. So, we're, I hate to go back to the fruit basket, but these are not exactly apples-to-apples anymore. There may be differences in those previous rates as well. We have done zero work on any of those since March.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a number of questions on this, and I really wanna reiterate the concern with who owns this project. I agree that if Lincoln's gonna be the lead on this, Lincoln really needs to take the liability on it. And so, I'm really uncomfortable with the current state of the question of indemnification. I'll leave it at that. Something I wanna understand is, during the whole lead-up to our decision back in spring, we had in front of us what Lincoln was calling a firm price offer. What's the difference between a firm price offer and an offer summary?
I think, actually, I'd like to call Bruce up and have him articulate that for you. I don't wanna put words in there.
Okay. Thank you.
So, as I understand your question, is the difference between a firm price offer and just an offer, they're the same thing? The City of Lincoln in, or February of 2011, made an offer to the county and to Auburn to design, do environmental review, construct and operate the regional facilities. That same offer was updated in February of 2012, and some minor changes were made to it in response to requests that the county had at the time, county staff had at the time. That offer is what we call a firm price offer. And the reason we don't call it anything other than a firm price offer is because there are some variables in there that could change. If there's inflation, there's some changes associated with it. If, remember the other changes now. We have put forward, the City of Lincoln has put forward our reimbursement for the oversizing as a contingency. It's about, with the county, at $7 million. If the costs go up so that all of that $7 million is used to pay for the cost of the project, then the City of Lincoln gets no reimbursement associated with all the oversizing that they've done in the past. And then, what happens after that is the county then would pay for extra costs. We don't envision that happening, but that is a provision of the offer that was made in 2011 and then reiterated and revised in 2012. So, I think the firm price offer and the offer that the City of Lincoln's made and is summarized in the summary, they're all the same thing. If there are any differences in that, that somebody sees, we'd be glad to either explain them or correct them if necessary. We've been going through that process with the county staff.
I would be interested in understanding the difference as to what I recall from the firm price offer versus the offer now as it relates to the SRF monies and how those ultimately get paid to the City of Lincoln.
Okay. In the original offer that was made by the City of Lincoln, the City of Lincoln was saying for this fixed, for this firm price capital cost and for firm price operational cost, we would do all these things. That has not changed. At one time, there was some discussion about maybe the financing needs to be done through the City of Lincoln as opposed to through the county. But that was discussion, and where it ended up was it was better for the county to do that SRF financing, and so, that's the way it's proceeding.
And my question wasn't really about whether or not it was better for the county to do the SRF financing, but how those dollars would get paid out to Lincoln over the course of the project I'm trying to find.
Originally, in 2011, the concept in the offer at that point in time was that the county would pay in advance, and then, we would do the work. In the 2012 offer, revisions that were made, we agreed to do it on a reimbursement, basically, at the time that the costs are incurred, the county would pay for the cost at that point in time, not in advance.
So, my specific concern on this is the bullet point on page 13 in our staff report, which says Lincoln oversizing payments will be financed through SRF, which increases the SMD-1 reserve coverage requirements, which then drives our M&amp;O up. I don't recall that as being in the firm offer.
That was not part of the 2011 offer. In the 2011 offer, we said we would finance that and have it paid back over time. In the 2012 offer, it was, we understood it would be paid upfront, and here's the capital cost. We said, here's the total cost, you pay us this money as we move forward, and we will build and design the entire project.
Jim, I'm gonna ask you this. The statement in the staff report is, these estimates differ from information previously presented to your board as a result of the following changes in assumptions. So, was that not from our perspective?
The model that we presented to your board in March, I believe, still contemplated that we would be making payments to Lincoln, not financing the, that oversizing through the SRF. Is that correct, Kathy?
Mm-hmm.
So, that is a change from the model that we showed you in March.
Okay. And the reason I'm looking at this is, you know, every, every one of these little changes that's an increase to the fee that people pay for M&amp;O, I'm concerned with, and I wanna figure out how we can reduce that so that if we do have to subsidize rates, we have to subsidize them as little as possible. And, you know, I'm just concerned that there was really, frankly, kind of a change in terms from what I expected from the decision we made in spring versus what I'm seeing in the board packet today. That's probably a discussion I'll have with Jim for the future, but just so you know, it's a concern of mine. Generally, Jim, in terms of the question of, Item 3 provides staff direction regarding project funding alternatives for SMD-1 and City of Auburn, I don't really wanna go more into the discussion about the City of Auburn because I think we covered that pretty thoroughly when Bernie was up there. But, you know, I would say that what I would like to see in terms of project funding alternatives for SMD-1 ratepayers is see an analysis that tells us, here's how much we would have to subsidize it to get the rate to $86 a month to $90 a month. I want a clear understanding of that range. How much would that cost us? I don't wanna say, what if we had $11 million from the feds and we threw it in the pot? I wanna pick a rate, this is exactly what I was kind of asking the City of Auburn to do. I wanna pick a rate, that rate range that we could live with and say, what would it take to get to that rate range? Rather than say, okay, we've got $10 million, we can throw in the pot, where will that put us?
We can just actually provide you with a sliding scale that shows you on a dollar-per-dollar basis what that does.
Thank you. I've already made my suggestion about Auburn and the $7 million off the 27 for... I think that's really it. I think we've pretty much covered everything else on my list today. Supervisor Euler?
One quick question. Jim, when you read over a moment ago, the fees associated with the various alternatives that we were considering on March 13th, the connection fee that you read that was part of the stay-at-home private operator solution was how much?
For a 2.1 MGD SRF-financed project, this is a PERC project, not the SOMAS project. The capital cost was $58.7 million. The O&amp;M rate was $76.66, and the connection fee was $4,377. Now, I would say, on all of the connection fees, I do wanna throw out the caution that that would be the treatment component of a ultimate connection fee because there's a transmission collection system component as well. So, I don't wanna represent to you that that would be the ultimate connection fee that I would recommend to your board. There are other components.
So, those connection fees on the regional, as per our discussion on the additional .4 million gallons per day, we would be funding that with connection fees or annexation fees or both? Or is that just connection fees because it's already within the annexed area?
It would be connection fees. The annexation fee is directed at other, it's essentially your buy-in to the existing infrastructure is what it is. It's reimbursing the original.
So, of the roughly $9,500, almost $10,000 a month that we're looking at right now, estimated for the connection fee, that's 100% pass-through to the City of Auburn?
The connection fee that we have represented in our, in our presentation, actually...
It includes the transmission.
It includes that transmission component. It's not just, so, we're trying to project what, in our presentation today, we've been trying to project what we believe represents the actual fees, not just the Lincoln component of the fee.
So, what chunk of that, then, is for transmission versus pass-through to the City of Auburn?
The piece of it that would go to the City of Lincoln would be...
I mean, Lincoln, I'm sorry.
I believe it's $4,300, and then, that could be adjusted by the flow and loading. So, it could be from 43 up to, let's say, 56.
Okay. So, roughly, half is transmission and half is...
Remembering that in the, that's for a regional project because a large piece of the transmission connection fee component is for the new transmission line from Auburn to Lincoln. That component doesn't exist in a stay home. So, again, we're talking two very different things. How much is the local component of the connection fee bill? About $1,500 right now is the local component.
So, then, if you add the local component to the PERC proposal, you're looking at about $6,000 in terms of the...
Roughly. We'd be in that $6,000-$7,000 range, roughly.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Jim, one other thing while you're creating a sliding scale for us. I think it would also be certainly useful to me and probably useful to the rest of the board to see a phase-in proposal of any rate increases over a couple of years to get to these rates that will still meet the SRF need to be able to demonstrate that we're gonna be able to pay back this loan at some point.
We will, we will look at that. It's always, it's always an option. It's an option that results in a higher ultimate rate.
Yeah. Okay. Any more questions from the board before I open it up to the public? All right. Seeing none, is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on this or ask any questions or present their own argument? We have a taker.
Wayne Nader, North Auburn. I currently live within the SMD-1 service area, and obviously, I've spoke before you folks on a few occasions, this is already. And I believe one of you mentioned in March, when you moved forward on this, that the devil is in the details. I think that was an understatement, given the discussion today. And it's amazing to me that in March, you made a decision in August, you know, we're still here wrestling with a lot of the issues in this, and we still don't have a lot of answers. And that's unfortunate. I'm not sure when these numbers became available, because I know that's probably why Auburn has been hesitant until there was something more specific to try to work with, at least understanding kind of where the rate is going. And I believe the chair already mentioned that, you know, the rates are not gonna stay static. We know that it's gonna, they're gonna go up over time. There is obviously efficiencies gained by having a greater ratepayer base to spread those costs out over, and I think you can appreciate that, I'm sure Auburn can as well, is that there may be an initial bump in the rates now, but over time, those rates will probably not jump as much as they would if they stayed on their own and went up over time. So, I would really encourage that the regional concept still has a lot of merit. And I know that at least one of you has mentioned that you wanna get out of the wastewater business, and I can certainly appreciate it because of the complexities of it that you've, to the point of nauseam, have reviewed over the last year. But as the regional, the executive director of Regional Water Quality has said, you'll never be out of it. If there's, if there are violations, the county is always on the hook for it. So, and we know that those regulations are gonna get more stringent as time goes along. Releasing into these small streams is gonna get just more and more challenging as time comes, so those costs are gonna go up. Again, I know this is an extremely difficult decision. It has a lot of complexities. It has a lot of potential risks in it. But any major public works project, whether it's the Hoover Dam or the Golden Gate Bridge or other projects like that, all have inherent risks in them. But what, another key component to those was the taking the bold vision to move forward on things that have ultimate impacts that are further out than we can see today. So, and positive impacts. So, I would really encourage you to continue to support this effort. If you don't have all the answers you need right now, obviously, there's a mechanism or it should be a mechanism to get those done quickly, I would hope, so that you can make the right decision. And again, I hope that you will continue to support the regional effort. Thank you.
Anyone else like to weigh in on this? Mr. Short?
Chair Montgomery?
Spencer Short, Mayor, City of Lincoln. You know, I've been listening to a lot of really disparate comments here today, and it actually scared me. I thought I was still in March. Because we're still discussing some similar things, but I'd like to address a couple of items. The discussion we're having today is not about a contractor. I wanna disabuse you all of that knowledge. This is about a partnership, a partnership that's been in place for over 12 years, a partnership that has labored at times because there has been a lack of action on an offer. I wanna take you back two years. Two years ago, the City of Lincoln made this offer. We have been very serious about moving this forward because at the time, we said, we either need to move this forward or forget about the project. Robert was there at the PNWA meeting. We actually pushed this thing forward because we felt strongly that regionalization, partnership among local agencies, is the best thing for all of us, not just for Lincoln, not just for Auburn, not just for Placer County. We're here today talking about the deal points of what we're, of this deal that we've made. Okay? Okay? We gave you a high-level concept, okay? At the time of your board meeting, you authorized your staff to go off, and I'll say, your staff has done a very competent and workmanlike job of protecting the county's interest. But now, we're getting down into the weeds, and I'd just like to try to bring you guys back up here. When we start talking about indemnification, we're actually talking about a project that technically is owned by the county for a portion of it, the transmission line, and is partially owned by the city, the plant itself. When we say we will indemnify each other, I think it's important to note that we have two separate parts of this project that we're indemnifying ourselves on. We're protecting ourselves, and we're going to act as partners, okay? I don't know how much clearer we can say this because, quite frankly, attorneys, and no offense to Mr. Carden or our city attorney, but you get two attorneys in the room, you get three different opinions. We will work together on this. We have worked together. We've done a very solid job of getting this project to this point. I'd hate to see it fall apart and for the entire region to see a partnership like this devolve because what's going to happen is if something like this can't happen, where are we at with our other partnerships? We have partnerships over the conservation plan. We have partnerships over a number of other aspects in this county. I'd encourage you to seriously consider moving this forward. Let's get through the design and environmental. I'd also like to weigh in for a second, and given that Lincoln doesn't have a dog in the fight with Placer County, with Auburn, I'll speak, I'm going to switch hats for a second. I'm not going to do a Bill Kirby where I actually change hats. But as a member of the PNWA board, at our last meeting, we encouraged Auburn to move forward with everything they could to bring something back that would indicate what they're willing to do as far as being involved in the design, being involved in the oversizing because they understand that's in their best interest. Madam Chair, if you would, I... So, that has been actually addressed to the City of Auburn. We're hopeful that there can be some movement because we understand, in some ways, it's kind of like a used car deal. You know, you go into a used car dealer, they're saying, what do you want to pay per month? The other side's saying, well, hey, you know, what do you want, what can I buy the car for in total? That's what we're talking about. We're talking about the same sort of deal. And so, if we can get a starting point from one or the other, you know, I think that'd be a move in the right direction. And in fact, if it'd be of any help, I'd be willing to sit down with both sides and try to help work through this to see if we can't come to some sort of, some sort of deal that makes sense for this entire county, for the greater contingency that we have here. So, if there are any questions you have, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
I see none. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I will bring it back to the board. We're being asked to do a couple of things here today. I'm sorry, Jim, did you have any closing comments before?
No, I actually didn't. I think our actions, I won't bring the slide back up, but you've got our actions in front of us. I did want to point out and put a little bit of a fine point on item number three. Our intent was to engage the discussion, get as much input in whatever direction your board wanted to give. We frankly didn't anticipate that you would come to conclusion on this issue today and give very definitive discussion. So, I apologize if that recommended action was perhaps not as clear as it could have been. You engaged the conversation that we anticipated you would. We did not expect that you would come to conclusion on it today.
Thank you, because we didn't. So, we're being asked to take two actions here today, really. The first is adopt the attached resolution authorizing the chair to sign the design and environmental agreement with the City of Lincoln in an amount not to exceed $6,67,000. The second action is we're being asked to direct staff to negotiate the construction and initial operations agreement pursuant to the attached deal point outlines. Just as a clarification, when the word negotiate is in there, I take that to mean that the concerns that we shared with you as a board today about the offer summary and particularly the things about indemnification and some of those other questions will be part of that negotiation, that we will not, we are not directing you to go out and adopt attachment B as an agreement.
That is correct. We've taken copious notes during the conversation, and you've provided us with the direction that we were hoping for. I would also note that it's very likely that as this agreement, this will be a large, complex agreement, and this is a starting point, we may be back to your board with further deal points in the future as we move along.
I would expect that, in fact, so thank you. All right, so, I think three and four have been handled on this. So, what's the pleasure of the board on items one and two?
Will we adopt staff recommendation?
It's been moved and seconded to adopt staff recommendation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. That was for one and two?
Yes.
Thank you, just to be clear. All right. Jerry, take it away.
The board will now return to closed session to discuss the items on page four of the agenda, item seven, conference with legal counsel on Sierra Club versus County and Collins versus County, Coombs versus County, and Ad hoc Committee versus County. Also, the board will have a conference with its labor negotiators on both PPO and DSA matters.